Good evening, welcome to the North Hampton City Council Meeting of March 20th, 2014. Worth noting, the first day of spring and the first council meeting we've actually convened in a long time where it's still light out. Before we convene, the council's established in its rules this time to be set aside for public comment, and anybody can speak on any topic of community interest, but there are a few rules that we require that you keep to. When you speak, when you step up to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your marks to under three minutes, there's a timer here that will count you down and show you how much time you have remaining, and then please close at or before the three-minute mark. It is possible you could be ruled out of order if you insist on going over the time. It's fine if you're finishing up a thought or a sentence, that's fine. But when you start a new thought, new paragraph, something along that line, I will ask you to please finish. The councils are expected to listen, to pay attention, but they are not allowed to speak during public comments, so any questions you ask, they won't be answered at that time, and they'll be considered essentially rhetorical. And then also pleased by the decorum of the proceedings, by speaking with conviction and respect, and refrain from mentioning or critiquing private citizens by name or address, and that includes employees of the city, but all elected officials were fair game. Call us whatever you want, and maybe invent something new that we haven't heard, that would be exciting. Among the items that we will be discussing and/or deliberating tonight are, early on there'll be a hearing on the petition of the North Hampton Business Improvement District to amend their fee structure. That hearing will be to those points only, those will accept testimony in favor and opposed based on the amended proposals. Then we'll also have a presentation by the Board of Public Works on the forestry management plan for North Hampton's water protection areas around our reservoirs, and no vote associated with that discussion will be taken. And then it's also the second vote for the establishment of the Storm Water and Flood Control Enterprise Fund and its fee structure. And then we also will be considering transfer of funds to legal services and the parking garage. There'll be a number of proclamations and everything else, but I suspect that most are here for one of those items that I just mentioned. So to start off, Anthony Patillo, please.
Anthony Patillo, Autumn Drive, Florence, Mass. Trust, Charter, and Laws. Leading up to this ordinance, there were several open meetings to the public, there was a doctrine that was proposed of a cap of fees collected, of $2 million for five years. This was proposed and put out there, and a lot of people supported that because of the fixed incomes that they're on, because of the override that just passed, they needed to be able to budget what they had to pay. The council voted for this, and at that meeting, one of the councilors said, "Well, there's rules that have been broken," specifically Rule 36, which stated that "at or before the meeting of the council of the ordinance committee, city solicitors shall review for form and legal character." Not done. February 25th, three votes unanimous to support with approval to go to council, and which it was then passed for the first vote. I don't understand how the trust can be kept. This is like me going in for a five-year loan at a fixed rate, going to sign the papers, and then being told at that time, "No, this is an APR, these are the new terms, and by the way, the terms we told you before were illegal." A lot of citizens don't appreciate this. The money that is going, the $2 million for this, in 1940, the city went into an agreement with the federal government after the dykes were built that they would maintain what was built. Said in that agreement that you shall devote funds to make this happen and to follow the rules and standards. It wasn't done. So 70 years later, 65 years later, we're now told that if we don't get these things that are, our lack of maintenance aren't done, we will take you from a minimal acceptable rating to unacceptable, and if that happens, you're not going to be able to get flood insurance That should have been done with tax dollars, and now we're putting in place a fee to do this. This just isn't the way that we should be doing business. This doesn't bring trust, and there clearly are issues with law that are going on here. And you guys, I hope that you listen, I really hope you listen, because this is not the way to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Walker, please.
Paul Walker, 52 Gilrain Terrace, Florence, Mass. I'm here tonight as a concerned taxpayer who attended many of the BPW Task Force meetings, where they were charged to put together this report, over 50 pages. I wonder how many of you have actually read this? I'd like to express these comments. I see a similar process in the handling of this being put together, similar to one put together in our nation's capital by a committee of nine members and some elected officials, which was called the Affordable Healthcare Act, one which is already affecting me and perhaps some of you, and will more. You may recall, as it was being discussed, a comment along these lines was spoken. After you approve it, you can read it and find out what's in it. It's amazing, it's amazing. It's amazing that I see incidental on page 10 of this report, where it says, and I will quote it, "This may be too complex for the citizens to understand." I wonder how many of you really understand it. Without a doubt, it is a very complex and two-part financial issue. One part is intended as a helpful solution for city sewers, drainage, and infrastructure; the second part related to the city's operation and maintenance for flood protection. If you have read this city manual, it is mandated, and this is the flood control one, which ties in dramatically with this other report. How many have read this? It is tied in by many financial obligations, which should have and have not been meant. Physically maintenance, long past due, presently passed, and for the present, I don't see how we can afford to do them. I support paying my share, but tell me what I'm getting for $2 million. When watching TV of the city council meeting on March 6th, I was dismayed again by the process. Even two legal minds exchanged interesting questions and answers. I was waiting and expecting, as other taxpayers have told me, more discussions, debate on the issue pertaining to the subject such as "what as if?", what are we getting to accomplish? Do we have a printed itemized plan which projects where this money is going? What are our priorities? I believe a letter in our current flood plan indicates that the Board of Public Works should give us a reason and a printed program for where the money's going. I urge you to ask them. You're signing a blank check, and when you sign a blank check, that you should have checked before you sign.
Mr. Walker.
A signature on a check means responsibility and accountability, and I'd like to have some.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker.
Thank you for my time.
Richard Gazowski, please.
Richard Gazowski, 64 Nanotuck Street in Florence. Over the past few months, the North Hampton Department of Public Works and Board of Public Works have made many compelling presentations for the need to upgrade and maintain the flood control and stormwater distribution systems in the city. The means to pay for these upgrades is before you tonight in the form of the Storm Water Enterprise Fund, which will raise $2 million exclusively from property owners in North Hampton. There are many people and businesses who are not property owners, but who will benefit from this maintenance, including the city itself. Historically, the city has paid for stormwater work through appropriations from the general fund, to the tune of $250,000 to $500,000 each year. Under the new enterprise fund, the city will be contributing nothing from the general fund. I want to repeat that. The city will be contributing nothing from the general fund toward this enterprise fund. As you're aware, only 68% of the general fund comes from real estate and property taxes, with the remainder coming from other sources, including state aid to cities and towns. By approving the Storm Water Enterprise Fund in its current form, you're saddling North Hampton property owners with yet another assessment on top of the recently passed override, increasing water and sewer bills, and the annual 2.5% automatic property tax increase. While this new assessment may be a couple of hundred dollars each year, to many people that amounts to more than petty cash. By exempting the city from paying into the enterprise fund, you're essentially giving the enterprise fund a $250,000 or more increase by transferring its maintenance burden to the new enterprise fund. Before approving this new tax on property owners of North Hampton, I urge you to reduce the $2 million cap on the enterprise fund by the amount the city has historically budgeted for flood control and stormwater maintenance. With the recently announced increase in local aid figures, from the Gazette here, maybe it's possible to reduce the property owner's burden even more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Rakaska, please.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing us all to speak. I am Barbara Rakaska from 571 Florence Road. I'm urging the council to not do a second vote on the stormwater fee. One, I have gone to meetings, and so have a lot of other people, and you need to relook at this. There were last-minute amendments that the public did not know about, so the public feels like they were told one thing, and something else is thrown at them. Also, it went to four tiers from three, which does spread the money around, but how can we believe a range of $61 to $85 for small parcels, right? And that's a big jump, 61 to 85 a year, when you don't even know what the rate of the fee is going to be yet. I have not heard what the rate is going to be, so how can we say how much it's going to be? And yet you're going to vote on it. I do think that the public needs to come in and be told more before you do a second vote, and allow it to come through. I don't see how you can vote on an unknown. It would be nice if we could have some more public input in meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Emory Ford, please.
My name is Emory Ford. I live at 364 Spring Street, Florence, Massachusetts. On March 6th, the North Hampton City Council approved an amended proposed ordinance, creating a utility for stormwater and flood control. The vote was taken despite several members testified they had not received the amended ordinance in time to study and analyze it. The vote was taken despite it violated one of the council rules on deliberation. A key element of the original proposed ordinance, created a utility for stormwater and flood control with a provision to cap expenditures for five years. The amended ordinance makes the cap uncertain, both in the first five years and subsequent years. In the many hearings held in North Hampton prior to the vote, citizens were led to believe that the ordinance would contain a cap. I believe North Hampton needs a continuing source of funding for stormwater and flood control. However, I strongly believe that the enactment of an inordinate should be done in a way that the council members have adequate time to reflect on the ordinance before passing it, and to ensure that the public understands the ordinance prior to a vote. Further, the city council follows its own protocol with respect to the passage of the ordinance. To do less is, in my opinion, irresponsible governance. Tonight, you have the opportunity to reconsider your actions of March 6th. The citizens here tonight, and those at home, have expectations of you for responsible governance.
Thank you very much. Rick Clark, please.
Hello, my name's Rick Clark. I live at 84 Williams Street. I sat on the stormwater task force, but I'm here as a concerned taxpayer. For decades and decades, resident property owners have carried the burden for paying for 83% of all stormwater work in the city, based on property taxes. Engineers tell us that stormwater management is specifically about impervious surfaces. The stormwater and flood control ordinance, as amended, is unfair and inequitable because it appears the business, commercial, and nonprofit property interests in this city have exerted questionable and undue influence on the process. This is a shell game, and has resulted in inordinates where these sectors will not pay a fee equal to their actual impervious surfaces. This is mostly because they have cleverly succeeded in insisting that city property and open space be counted into the equation, despite the logical and political questions still surrounding these choices. Chicopee, for instance, does not do this, and they have the oldest stormwater utility in the state, oh, and a budget surplus. The city council stormwater task force was to be an advisory group of 12 members, one citizen selected by each council member from their ward, one each appointed by the council president and vice president, one representative from the Chamber of Commerce, one from the BPW, and one from the nonprofit community. However, the Chamber of Commerce, and presumably councillor Spector, felt it important and necessary to have not one, but two members of the chamber's very own and quite formidable stormwater task force to sit as voting members on the citizen advisory task force. And surprise, surprise, now we have an ordinance strongly endorsed by, and basically written by, the Chamber of Commerce. I wonder why citizens are even asked to participate when the process seems like just so much busy work or lip service? Although we met more often in the charter committee, we were not given any ethics instructions, and we did not take any oaths. You might want to look into how you construct and oversee future volunteer citizen advisory committees. So let's see, if the city is billed from now on for 10% of the utility, only property taxes will pay that bill, and we know businesses pay only 17% of property taxes. Homeowners will get to pay 83% of that stormwater utility bill for the city. So why is that? Why would you defer to the Chamber of Commerce and allow them to include city property into this ordinance? Wow, maybe it's because certain insiders recognize that the commercial and tax-exempt properties percentage of total impervious surface drops from 31% to 24%. And well, let's just go for it and baffle everyone at the last minute, if I may have one more minute. My wife will finish reading, she signed up after me.
That would be fine. Yes, Rick, go ahead.
Thank you. With this rarely-used hydraulic acreage formula, I imagine the Chamber task force thought, "Shoot, if we can build more farmland and recreation fields and open space for stormwater runoff, that means smaller bills for parking lots." It is really not that hard to understand. It is very easy to argue that this ordinance will come back to bite us, in large part because it is so alarmingly short-sighted by you, our elected officials. What exactly are we going to do with that general fund line item when the news of more mandates and unforeseen problems caused the stormwater utility budget to double, or triple, or worse? When will we need an override for this line item?
So Rick, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I mean, because we have a lot of people here tonight.
I have one more cent.
Real expectation to speak.
It's fine, my wife can finish reading this, it's important, you hear it.
And I do see, coincidentally, that Marcy Clark is next up on the list here, so I suspect that you guys can tag-team here.
That's what the point is, okay.
Okay.
Where did you leave off? Hi, Marcy Clark, I also live at 84 Williams Street. Will we then need an override for this exploding line item, is where he left off. By enacting this ordinance, you will be setting up an unfair system where tax-paying property owners are charged twice, once through the enterprise fee and once through the general fund, for this same line item. In effect, homeowners will be subsidizing Chamber of Commerce members and clients by having an ordinance requiring that homeowners carry a heavier and heavier load. Some of this would be easy to correct by passing an amendment removing the city as a stormwater utility fee payer.
Okay. Thank you very much, Wonto. Jasper Lapinski, please.
Hello, my name's Jasper Lapinski, I live at 226 South Street. I'm aiming for the shortest public comment I've ever done tonight. It's not about the stormwater ordinance, that's why. Assembled councillors, Mayor Narckwitz, if you can hear me somewhere, doesn't the idea of vibrant sidewalks miss the point a little bit? You can't make sidewalks pretty if they don't exist. I'm sure the residents of River Run would love a vibrant patch of mud along Damon Road. Is there room in the budget for some vibrant, almost got-hit, ankle-twisting potholes on Florence Road? Perhaps PVTA would split the cost of a vibrant not-a-bus stop by the Look Park Rotary. If there's money for vibrancy, it should be used to offer access to more people, rather than to offer aesthetic amenities to those who already have that access, because the most vibrant sidewalk of all is a plain sidewalk that has everyone on it. 57 seconds. Since I have a little bit more time, I would like to just interject into the complain fest. I think that this ordinance is a very good ordinance, I think it's been well-studied, and I think that it could have been a lot worse than it was. Thank you for doing something about it, because doing nothing was the only alternative that was proposed, and that would have been tragic, in the sense that the city would become unlivable within 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phoebe Sessions, please.
My name is Phoebe Sessions, and I live at 17 East Street, and my understanding was that tonight the mayor would be reading a proclamation naming March 2014 as Social Work Month. So Dean Carolyn Jacobs and I are here representing the Smith College School for Social Work as we partner with the National Association of Social Workers, which has designated this year's theme as "All People Matter." We wish to express our appreciation for the mayor's acknowledgement of the significance of social work in this proclamation, and to briefly bring to the community's awareness the resources which social work brings to North Hampton and the Pioneer Valley. Some of the very important themes identified in the proclamation are based on the foundational values of social work, including the promotion of social justice, a commitment to counteracting the effects of poverty and trauma which unfairly restrict human potential, support for diversity through recognition of the equal value of all people, engagement with clients at all stages of life to enhance their capacity to master a range of health and mental health challenges, contributing to safe environments and enriched education for our children, attention to the range of needs experienced by veterans and their families following years of service to our country, and access to health and mental health care based on current theoretical and practice knowledge. There are 42 full-time social work interns from the School for Social Work. They constitute 17% of our student body of about 250, who are in field placements across the country, from Seattle to San Diego, from Maine to Atlanta. Here in Western Mass, our interns are working in inpatient mental health settings, where they provide clinical social work services to patients and families as part of interdisciplinary teams. They are working in public school settings, where they are providing intensive counseling support to troubled children and families, coordinating with teachers, and using knowledge of child mental health issues to contribute broadly to the educational mission. They are providing in-home therapy services to children and their families, in which teams of professionals and interns can address multiple needs in a flexible outreach format, representing a core mission of the school, which was founded during World War II as a part of Smith College's commitment to the war effort. Our interns work with veterans and their families through VA settings. So that's where we, at the School for Social Work, are, and we thank the mayor and the city council of North Hampton for this opportunity to bring these services to the attention of our community.
Thank you very much. Alan Scheiman, please.
I accidentally signed the general sheet when I only meant to...
Understand, that's fine. So you want to be in the bid testimony?
Yes.
You want to speak in the bid testimony, okay. Deb Jacobs, please.
My name is Deb Jacobs. I live at 82 Grove Avenue, Leeds, and I want to get back to the stormwater management. I think it's tremendously important that more attention be paid to it, and like everybody else, it's going to be hard for me to come up with the money, but one of the things that I would really hope is that the city itself would take stormwater management more seriously with the buildings that they have. I went to an excellent program at the Lilly Library last year that was put on by the Pioneer Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Could you, I'm sorry, Deb, can you speak up? Some people are saying they can't hear you.
Okay. Can I have a couple minutes back?
We'll give you, I'll spot you some there.
Okay. I went to an excellent program on stormwater management at Lilly Library last year that was offered by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and I'm hoping that the city will do some educational projects, because there's a lot more to putting in a rain garden or putting up rain barrels than the average person realizes. And in terms of the city, and what I'd like to see is, when Pulaski Park is redone, I would like to see stormwater management take a major focus, because you've got those roofs from Memorial Hall and the Academy of Music, you've got some mature trees that hopefully will stay, and I think the city needs to help lead the way in terms of what can be done, in terms of promoting stormwater management. I'll leave whether or not it's fair, the process that you've used, for other people to comment on, because I haven't really followed that. I also would like to comment briefly on the forestry program that's being currently done that you're going to be apprised of tonight, and I think it's unfortunate that it sounds like it's losing some money, especially at a time when we're being asked to put money into a new enterprise fund, and I hope that that was a misprint in the paper. I also would like to say that I was disheartened to hear that hemlocks were being targeted as a tree to come down because of the woolly adelgit. It is an organism that the state is taking very seriously, and that we won't be able to eradicate, but hopefully there'll be a balance, and hemlocks are just too valuable as both a signature tree and a wild... And hemlocks are just too valuable, as both a signature tree and wildlife habitat, for us to be targeting them, as they're going to die anyway. So I hope you'll give all of that some thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richie Cozer? Am I got that right?
Richie Cozer, 35 Lindsay Road, West Hatfield. I have a house in North Hampton, and all my frontages in Hatfield, have no services from the city of North Hampton, except a tax bill. I don't mind paying my taxes, but this year alone, proposition two and a half override, along with a CPA tax, which goes to a lot of jobs, probably this money does not apply to. I think the city officials should tighten their belts to too much fuller spending. None of this helps us on Lindsay Road.
Thank you very much. Molly Hale, please.
Hi, I'm Molly Hale, at 96 Oak Street in Florence, and I'm here to speak in favor of the forest management plan. In full disclosure, I'm a wildlife biologist, and I contributed sections to that plan. I contributed the wildlife habitat assessments, the vernal pool assessments, and the invasive species assessments that are in that report. There's good forestry and there's bad forestry, and this is not bad forestry, this is good forestry, and I feel that it's not only acceptable but necessary in order to protect the quality of the water and the integrity of the forest. It's not a high grade, which is when you remove all the good trees and leave the yucky ones, leave the poor quality trees. In fact, in this plan, the best quality trees are being left there. There are not clear cuts involved. The largest openings are only three-quarters of an acre, which is really not very big. Most of the openings are even smaller than that. And they're dispersed among a matrix of uncut area that is left just as is. So it's not a huge extensive area that's being cut, as some of the critics have sort of implied. The purpose of it is to protect water quality, primarily. And it's important, in order to do that, to keep a forest of tall, healthy, vigorous, and diverse species of trees, and that's what the plan is aiming to do. It's up against several different challenges. This forest has a lot of problems that are, that set it apart from just sort of a natural pristine forest. One is that a number of the species, including hemlock, beech, and red pine, are already really severely impacted by introduced insects or fungi. There's almost a complete lack of regeneration, which means young trees growing from seed, and that's just mostly due to browsing by deer and moose, which are not, moose can't be hunted in the state, and deer can be, but I guess they're not hunted very much up there. So they're eating almost all the regeneration. And there's extensive presence of invasive vines and ferns, which exclude anything else from being able to grow up through them. So because of those challenges, it's not just sort of a pristine forest that you could just leave alone, and expect that it's going to continue to provide the functions that it does now. I basically urge anybody who hasn't read through the plan, who's, you know, involved in this issue, to at least read through the overview part, which is the first 40 or so pages. It gives a very clear idea of what the whats, the whys, and the hows, hows behind what's being proposed, and why. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glenn Ayers, please.
Hi, my name's Glenn Ayers, I live in Greenfield. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak at this forum. I'm totally ignorant of the stormwater issue, but I did come to speak about the forestry on the watershed properties. I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight, no one paid me to come here, and I'm a soil scientist, I have a BS and an MS in soil science, I'm a public water supply operator, and I read the plan. Let me just say that this land was purchased with public funds in order to protect it, that's why it's called Watershed Protection Forest, and it seems obscene to me to then sell off the public's resources at a loss, essentially, when the whole purpose of setting this land aside was to protect it from exactly this kind of destruction. There would be nothing that I could think of that would be happening in watershed lands that would be more destructive than putting in roads, skid trails, and cutting down the forest. Even in small patches, you still have to bring in a lot of roads. That opens up the area to a lot more invasive species, which is already a severe problem in the watershed, and it does not solve any of the problems with the so-called diseased and dying trees, because a natural, healthy forest needs lots of dead, diseased, and dying trees, because that is part of the ecosystem. So I think that the idea of setting aside watershed protection lands, the most highly protected lands in the state, and then not allowing citizens to walk on that land, to even take pictures, apparently, the mayor recently forbade whistleblower from stepping foot on the property or taking any more pictures to show what was happening there, and then to turn around and allow industrial-scale logging operations to go in, diesel equipment, petroleum products, and if you read the plan, it has six pages dedicated to spraying herbicides right in the plan. I think that that is a huge mistake, and that the city has really been sold a con job by very vested interests in perpetuating the timber extraction industry and transferring public assets, the public commonwealth, to a few private hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Winston, please.
Hi, I'm Jim Winston, 142 Main Street, North Hampton. I'm going to try to take three minutes to talk about two subjects. I realize the issue about the bid is going to come up later, I may not be here, so I'm just going to voice my support for the no bid, asking the council not to take any action on the bid's request while there's two active lawsuits that are being adjudicated in the courts concerning that issue. So I'd ask respectfully, council does not take any action on that. The other issue, totally unrelated, is about the parking garage, and I'm a leaseholder, been for several years, and I know the city has sold way more leasehold passes than our spaces down there, and that's normally not a problem, we can park in the rest of the garage. However, the garage has had many issues this past winter, we know about, you know, when there's snow on the fifth floor, they lose spaces, we know about the recent issue with the tickets that made the garage say full when it really wasn't, creating backups. And so I had actually, I think I reached out to City Councilor O'Donnell about this issue, about, I think if you have a leasehold and you're paying $90 a month, you should be able to display that on your car windshield and park in any of the lots in the city. And to the mayor's office credit, they did, for a period of time, inform the leaseholders that during this time where the garage had those parking issues, that if you put the leasehold on the dashboard, you would not get a ticket if you parked in Maplewood on a lot. So what I'm asking the council to consider, my position is that this should be a permanent understanding or ordinance within the city, that if you are a leaseholder, no leaseholder is going to intentionally park in Maplewood if they could park in the garage. But there are other times where the garage is full, especially around the holidays, and I think common sense would dictate that if you're paying $90 a month, that with that leasehold card, that you should be able to put that on your dashboard, and you should be able to park in any city-owned lot without having a ticket. As I said, I recognize the mayor's office did make that exception, but that was a limited exception, and then we were told that now we had to go back to the old ways. So if you are a leaseholder, and you come in and the lower part is full, as it often is Monday through Friday, and then the rest of the garage is full, now you have to pay for parking instead of being able to use your pass, and I just, I think the intention should be is that those people that are the dedicated holders of those leases, that they should be able to park in any lot on a permanent basis if the garage is full, not as a first option, and I'd ask the city to consider that. Thank you for listening to both points.
Thank you very much. Tim Pachark, please.
Hi, my name is Timothy Pachark, I'm from Lindsay Road, here to talk about the water runoff also. I didn't totally understand the bill until I talked to one of the city councillors, which was very helpful to understand a little more about it. But I still have mixed feelings on it, mostly to the not wanting it, like my other neighbor that was up here a little while ago, he's also on Lindsay Road. Lindsay Road is a public road, but it's owned and maintained by the city of Hatfield, town of Hatfield. Little town of Hatfield maintains the waterways, the gutters, supplies of water to us, basically everything comes from the town of Hatfield. I've never seen a city of North Hampton truck on that street fixing the road, or helping out with any of the water problems we've had in the past on that road, which we have had many, that the town of Hatfield has fixed. I do understand that the bill is also, has to do with the flooding controls, the dams and that, in the city of North Hampton. However, none of that would affect us over on the Lindsay Road area, over by, you know, over on the north end of the city. So I'm still against the tax, I'd be on the higher amount, around the $239 per year. It all adds up, my taxes are over $8,000 already, I think a portion of that should more than cover any type of issues with any of the streets further into the center of North Hampton. And that's it.
Thank you very much. That's it for everyone who's signed up. Is there anyone who's interested in speaking at this time? And I would do this with the caveat that the bid hearing, we're keeping the testimony to the amendment, the proposed amendments. If you want to talk about the concept of the bid as a functional entity, that's something completely different, we're speaking about the three structural amendments for rate change. It might be more appropriate if you want to speak more holistically, now would be the opportunity, because it wouldn't, it would not conform to the hearing process, just so we're clear. And you can speak on any other point, too. I just, that's still halved.
Hello, my name is Norma Akamatsu, I live on Crescent Street, but more importantly, I'm a clinical social worker renting office space at 151 Main Street for almost 30 years. And I came here to bring attention to the situation of therapist renters like me, who presumably will feel the burden of the bid fees during a period of the long decline of our own reimbursement rates. My chief concern is the mandatory nature of the fees, I feel the bid improvements are more relevant to retail and restaurant enterprises than to those of us perched above Main Street, with smaller profit margins. And if I ran the universe, I would dissolve the current bid and create a different type of organization that would not fall under the state directive for mandatory participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
Peter Tittleman, and I live at 11 Kensington Avenue, but have an office in 53 Center Street. Basically, I'd just like to agree with Norma's comments. I don't think that we had a really good chance to look at this for people who aren't selling things. I'm a psychotherapist, I don't think it's fair, we do our own snow removal, we don't want more people coming in from out of town, particularly, it won't help our parking, it doesn't seem fair. I also want to agree with Jim Winston's view, to not go ahead on this until the two suits that are active are decided. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan, do you want to speak now?
I think so, just because I have some general comments about the bid.
That's fine, why don't you come up and identify yourself and then your
My name's Alan Scheiman, I live at 50 Fairfield Avenue in Hoyok, I'm a property owner in downtown North Hampton. And the last time I was here, City Councilor Narckowitz and others told us that if we didn't like the bid, we could opt out. That's no longer true. Once the bid votes to renew itself, all of us who opted out, and that's 61% of all property owners, will be forced into bid membership against our will by a minority of property owners. This proposed modification tonight is to make the bid seem more palatable when it forces us into mandatory membership in a few months. I for one don't trust the bid management at all. Whatever they change now can be changed back later. Remember that these are the same bid people that swore that membership in the bid would always be voluntary, now it's mandatory. Remember, these same bid people used residential condominium unit owners to get the bid adopted, now they want to eliminate these same owners from membership in advance of the vote that will make bid membership mandatory. Maybe they are afraid of how that group will vote now. And remember, that these same bid people claimed that they were unhappy that the recent amendment to the bid law would make membership mandatory, but, in spite of that, they rejected our settlement proposal that would have kept the bid, but would have prevented mandatory membership. This minority of property owners represented by the bid wants to force the majority into membership. They are for a reduction of bid fees, only because, with the addition of fees from all of us who will be forced into membership against our will, they will have more money than they have now. The bid is proposing changes to both the original bid petition and to the business improvement plan that was contained in it. For the record, I believe that Mass General Law's Chapter 40O, Section 9, gives the City Council authority to approve a change in the current business improvement plan, but does not authorize any change to the rest of the original bid petition. There are two lawsuits pending, one challenges, one challenges the establishment of the bid, the other challenges mandatory membership. The first suit is going to trial next month. The City Council needs to table any actions relating to the bid until these lawsuits are determined.
Thank you very much, Alan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time, on any topic? Jordy? Yourself, and state your address.
Jordy Harold, and I live at 3 Massus Soiet Avenue, and I just want to essentially echo the points that Alan brought forward, that I was, went to many meetings as the bid was being established, and I'm friends with a lot of people who are active participants in the bid, and the whole tenor of those discussions was that this would be a voluntary organization, and so please don't oppose us in our effort to create something together. And we're now found, X number of years later, being potentially forcibly swept into that situation, which doesn't sit well, and that was language that was echoed at the council level as well. So, at least, at the very least, until these lawsuits are heard, I'd ask the council not to take any further action, but I mean, I think in general, as living together as a community, and considering how these things that the bid does seek to do get taken care of, that we need to look very carefully at how that might be structured.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Eric Schur. I own a number of properties within the bid and within the area of downtown Northampton. And I just want to echo what both Jordy Harold and Alan Scheiman had, had stated, that when, we spent a number of, of days in front of the City Council as this bid was being discussed. I think the one main thing that everybody heard as they made their votes in the council was that this wasn't going to be a mandatory situation, that we could all opt out. And here we are now, five years later, where the language mandatory is being forced upon us, and we're all going to be part of, if, if this moves forward, we're all going to be part of a bid. That, that when the votes were taken, many of the councilors basically voted because the bid, in fact, was going to be voluntary, and they felt that those that wanted to opt out were not going to be hurt. So we have two suits that are, that are now in front of the courts, a state suit and a federal suit. We have a suit that's being heard next month, and I would urge the City Council to table any action that's in front of you now with regard to the Northampton bid and, and what's in front of you until such time as both of these cases have been heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Going once, twice. I'm going to ask the secretary to call the roll, please, and we will convene.
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Here.
Counselor Fines?
Here.
Counselor Barnes?
Present.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Obama?
Here.
Counselor Sprecher?
Here.
Okay. I'm going to ask us to move a little bit out of order. We have a scheduled hearing, but we also have a proclamation, and rather than, I mean, we're honoring these people, not punishing them. And what I would like them to do is to have the opportunity to be acknowledged before we move on with the proceedings. Your Honor?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the City Council. It's my pleasure this evening to issue the following proclamation designating the month of March 2014 as Social Work Month in the City of Northampton. Whereas the primary mission of the social work profession is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable in society. And whereas social workers know that poverty and trauma can create lifelong social and economic disadvantages, and that discrimination of any kind limits human potential and must be eliminated. And whereas social workers stand up for individuals, support diverse families, and help people in every stage of life to function better in their environments, improve their relationships, and solve family and personal problems. And whereas social workers believe in shared prosperity and opportunity for everyone, and their research and advocacy help turn community needs into national priorities. And whereas social workers are change agents who put the ideals of citizenship into action every day. And whereas social workers celebrate the courage, hope, and strength of the human spirit throughout their careers, now therefore I, Mayor David J. Narckowitz, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2014 to be Social Work Month in Northampton. In recognition of the numerous contributions made by America's 600,000 social workers, I call upon residents to join with the National Association of Social Workers and with the Smith College School for Social Work in celebration and support of the social work profession. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and imprinted the city seal this 20th day of March in the year 2014, David J. Narckowitz, Mayor. And I know we have some guests here, if they're still here, and I present this to them.
They ran away? Norma, they ran away? She, she ran away. Well, she made some comment.
I'm half a second back.
She made comments at Ms. Sessions, made comments at the public comment section. So I'm sure she's grateful to have that. So thank you very much, and thank you for picking that out of order. We had scheduled at 7:05. As you can plainly see, we're past that just. For the public hearing, and this is ready, the petition of the Northampton Business Improvement District requests for adjustment of fee structure. And Counselor Adams?
Do you think that was appropriate to assert?
Yes, actually, yeah. Would you, Counselors have, Counselor Adams, see it after you.
I, I've spoken with the State Ethics Commission, an attorney there, and they've told me that I have an incurable conflict due to the fact that I have a family member that owns property in the district, and I can't take part in the vote, and I shouldn't even take, I can't take part in the discussions, and I probably shouldn't even be up here lest I suggest by my gestures and facial expressions any opinions I have on the subject. So I'll be leaving the council table for this discussion. Thank you.
And I put myself in the exact same circumstance. I have a family member that owns property in the bid jurisdiction, so I as well have been advised to depart at this point while you conduct the public hearing.
Okay. While we will be spared your eye roll. I appreciate that. So, we have two recused members from this discussion. Let me state upfront that the purpose of this hearing, as I said, is to, is a petition to amend the fee structure under the charter of, of the established bid. It is, we are required to speak only to those points, yea or nay, proponents, opponents. As I said, larger issues are not appropriate to discuss at this point. And I'm going to read the order, just so we're all, so you guys get to hear all the wheresses and such like. This is ordered that the petition of the Northampton Business Improvement District Incorporated in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 40O, S9, as has been cited already today, to approve the amendments to the petition to establish the Northampton Business Improvement District and to the initial Business Improvement District Improvement Plan incorporated into said petition. Both Northampton Business Improvement District Incorporated, I'm sorry, both approved by the City of Council on March 19, 2009, as adopted by the Board of Directors of the Northampton Business Improvement District Incorporated on January 10, 2014, and set forth below and concurred and endorsed by the owners of more than 51% of the assessed valuation of participating properties and more than 51% of the participating owners within the Business Improvement District attached to the petition is filed. To amend, the petition is to amend the petition to establish the Northampton Business Improvement District and, to the initial Business Improvement District Improvement Plan incorporated into said petition, both approved by the Northampton City Council of March 19, 2009, as follows. One, delete the first three lines of Paragraph 3 and subparagrafts 3A through 3C of said petition and substitute the following. Three, all private and public properties shall be included within the district with the exception of residential condominiums and exclusively residential buildings with less than four units. The proposed district annual fee schedule, subject to the inflation adjustments provided in the original petition, is as follows. A, the fee for commercial properties will equal the assessed value of such property multiplied by .0025. B, the fee for residential and residential commercial mixed-use buildings will be equal to $50 per residential unit plus 50 cents per square foot of commercial space. C, the fee for hotels will be equal to assessed value of such property multiplied by .0025. And, two, delete the first two lines of Paragraph 8A, Northampton Bid Fees, and subparagrafts 8A1 through 8A3 of said initial improvement plan and substitute the following. Northampton Bid Fees, all private and public property shall be included in the district with the exception of residential condominiums and exclusively residential buildings of less than 40, I mean, less than four units. Good catch. The bid annual fee schedule, subject to inflation adjustments provided in the original plan, is, one, the fee for commercial properties will be equal, will equal the assessed value of such property multiplied by .0025. Two, the fee for residential and residential commercial mixed-use buildings will be equal to $50 per residential unit plus 50 cents per square foot of commercial space. And three, the fee for hotels will be equal to the assessed value of such property multiplied by .0025. And two, that the, that except is modified by subparagrafts 1 and 2 above, said petition and initial plan is previously updated, continue in full force and effect. And three, that these amendments will become effective on the later of the, on the, on the later of the approval by the members of, in the Northampton City Council as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 40O, or July 1, 2014. Accept the motion to open the hearing, please.
Second?
We are now in public session, and we invite the proponent. Natasha, please identify yourself and.
Hello, my name is Natasha Yakovlev. I am the recently appointed interim executive director of the Northampton Business Improvement District. And on behalf of our Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to appear this evening to speak with you. With me tonight are several of our board members, as well as our General Counsel, Chip Doherty, who is available to answer any questions you may have about bid processes. Before you this evening is the bid's request to the City Council, asking that you approve a rate reduction for bid membership fees from the current .005 rate per thousand to .0025 per thousand, bringing commercial property owners to the same leveled fee structure, as well as a parallel 50% cut in the fees for mixed commercial residential properties. Let me give you some background on why the bid is asking for this fee reduction. In 2009, when the City Council approved the establishment of the bid, the approval included in the petition and the original improvement plan, the fee schedule for the bid member properties. The petition before you is to amend that fee schedule as summarized. In 2012, Massachusetts lawmakers passed new state legislation that mandates that if a current bid, if current bid members vote to renew the bid, all properties within a bid must become fee-paying members. The statute also provides that all bids have a mandatory sunset period that requires a member renewal vote every five years thereafter. We all believe that this provision is smart and extremely important for the continuity of the bid. It gives property owner members a stronger voice in the functions of the bid and helps ensure a high level of bid performance. The bid currently consists of 112 fee-paying properties. Under the new legislation that will bring all properties in, that number, number will be 279. While we want to see the bid grow, we have a good handle on what our budget needs to be in order to properly service our district. We think that reducing the rate is fair, and with new members, the budget will still grow even at the reduced individual rate. However, the bid is not about making money, the bid is about serving its district. The Board of Directors wants to use this new legislation with its sunset clause and our new fee structure as a positive first step toward creating a whole new bid as we continue to build an even stronger connection to the community. In the past two years, we have already seen a lot of exciting economic improvements in the business environment of our neighbors in East Hampton, Hoyoak, and Greenfield. Regional competition for discretionary dollars is getting tougher for Northampton. And with MGM even closer to building an $800 million destination casino in Springfield, Northampton needs to focus on ways to maintain and grow its reputation as a regional destination. We believe that this is an important time to move forward with this bid, and this fee change will be the first of many positive steps. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the proponent? That, actually, Natasha, I, if there are any other proponents queued up, and maybe we should hear from them first, and then we can ask questions.
Um, I believe, Rich, did you sign? No? No. Nope.
Could you walk us through the process, both if we were to vote no tonight and if we were to vote yes tonight? What are the next steps that would happen in each case?
If you were to vote yes tonight, we would go through the, the practical process of changing our inner IT systems and changing our database to match the free, the fee structure that is in the table that I provided. We would work with the tax collector to make sure that the same information was adjusted on their end, and we would send out notifications to all of our current fee-paying members, notifying them of the change that would, they would be seeing on their July 1 bill. And if you voted no tonight, we would not do any of the practical issues, but we would still send out a letter to our current members, letting them know that the change was not
And Mary points out, and she's right, we would have two votes on this anyway, so it wouldn't pass at the earliest until April 7. So there'd be a second reading at the next council meeting when the, survives the first vote.
When would the meeting of the members and potential members, since it's mandatory, vote on this and the continuation of the bid in general?
The first vote that would happen is a renewal vote for current members in our board, and that date has not been set yet. And that is the vote that brings in all of the other properties into the district.
Approximately, what are we talking, what are we talking, three months, six months, a year?
The board, I believe the board will make that decision within the next couple of weeks.
And that had to be done within a five-year period? Is that what the timeframe is?
Yes, yes, correct. So technically, we have until 2018, from when the legislation was changed in 2012.
So it's five years from when the legislation was changed, not five years from when we initially passed the.
Correct.
Um, can I, has there, have there been discussions about when that vote would take place? Because I think that's fairly important, and I kind of would like a better sense of, are we talking far out to 2018? Are we talking nearer to 2018?
Sure, no, it's going to happen sooner. The board has had many thoughtful discussions about when to hold this vote, so it is certainly going to happen sooner. They're, they're deciding between doing it this spring or doing it in the summer.
Okay. Thank you. And, and, clarification, at least based on the testimony, there is a reasonable person who was just coming to this might misunderstand and think that the city is mandated.
Correct.
It's compulsory membership, and.
The city has not.
In fact, this is, this is.
This is a state-mandated legislation.
And the city is actually, and at the time of deliberation for the original bid, and I wasn't part of that, but the fact is that the, the councilors were voting on information that was laid out to them at that point, and it was not their decision and/or choice to, to make it mandatory, make membership compulsory.
Correct. Nor was it ours, I will point out. This was a legislation that changed at the state level.
Counselor.
And also, just to clarify, the vote that we're taking on tonight is, and, and the next two weeks should have passed tonight, is really about the fee structure?
It's about the fee structure. It's about bringing the commercial properties, the entertainment venues, and the hotel all to the same level, to a rate of .0025. Currently, the commercial properties are .005. The entertainment venues are already .0025, and the hotel has a fee structure of a per-room fee. So we're bringing everybody to the same level. The mixed commercial residential units are feed on $100 per unit for four units or less, and then a dollar per square foot of commercial space. We're cutting that in half, so each unit will be $50 for units four or less, and then 50 cents per square foot for commercial space. It's going to be quite a savings for members.
Counselor, if you have a question.
Yes, thank you. I'm a little confused with this. I'm hearing, you know, that there is two lawsuits, and one of them might occur within a month. What happens? If we do two votes, we do one tonight, and another one in two weeks, and all of a sudden there's movement between the federal or the state courts that it's going to.
Counselor? My concern is asking, first of all, Natasha's not an attorney. More importantly, she's not our attorney.
I understand that.
So my concern is asking her for a legal opinion about that, I think that's something we should reserve for someone we pay the money to, who can actually own the answer. I, not that Natasha would lie, I don't think she would, but I would feel a lot more comfortable and confident about relying on information from an attorney that, that is.
Well, our attorney's not here, so.
No, our city solicitor is not part of this. Attorney Fitzgibbons is not present tonight?
Attorney, Attorney Doherty is here.
So he may be able to speak to that.
But, okay, just for purposes of clarification, although, you know, Attorney Doherty also does not necessarily, he's, he's representing the bid, so just, just so that we're clear on everything, there is time, at some point, we would certainly benefit from an opinion on that question. Your concern, as I understand, is the point that was raised a few times about the pending suits, one federal, one state suit, and actually, two different creatures, and whether that impedes our ability to vote on the existing and established language of the charter that already exists. We abide by the laws that were laid out to us at the time, not as to what's looming, so. But that's, again, I'm not a lawyer either, because I wouldn't be sitting here if I was. I'd just do it for the money. So if, but I, I don't know if you have any comments relative to that, Natasha. You're welcome to, it's just with the caveat that, that your opinion is.
Right, no, I understand that. Right, no, I understand that. If I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking if the trial that is looming has a negative impact on the bid, how is that going to affect our fee change? The fee change would go into effect for July 1. So whatever happens between now and then, happens between now and then, and the fee change, if, I mean, I can't comment on the litigation and what's going to happen at a trial, but what's happening next month, I don't think pertains directly to lowering the fees for members on July 1, is my answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Thank you for the question.
I'm just wondering about hotels?
Yes.
Because in that case, it's not just a coefficient that you're cutting in half, it's actually a new kind of assessment. Now it's $200 per room, and then after, if this were adopted, it would be like other properties.
It would be exactly like other properties, so they would be assessed at their assessed value times .0025, as opposed to the fee per room.
Are there any major implications of doing it that way? There's a total amount of money from hotels?
It is, it would be less money from the hotel in fees, for sure, but apart from implications, no. No, it's bringing everybody to a level playing field.
Is it roughly half?
Not for the hotel, no. The hotel is, I think, more about 17% or 18%.
Natasha, can you describe, you actually gave us a handout, but I think for the purpose of the hearing, if you'd describe the anticipated revenue you expect to generate from compulsory members, if you have a sense of what that would be?
Sure, we have an operating budget right now of about $409,000, and that's with our current members at the .005 rate. When we renew and all members are brought in at the .0025 rate, we'll be working with about $510,000 in our budget.
And with that anticipated increase, does that increase services?
It will, we, if you picture the boundaries or boundaries of the bid, we're currently working within a certain footprint, so a significant portion of that increase in our budget is going to go to providing services to the rest of the boundaries. We're expanding the footprint, so a good portion of that is going to go towards maintenance, towards snow clearing, winters like this eat up a lot of it. We will definitely look forward to doing more initiatives, more programming for downtown.
And this petition, this very thick document, which actually looks more impressive, simply because it represents each member, what was your response like when you put this out to the existing members about, I mean?
People were very positive. They are looking forward to the savings, they feel that they've been, they've been providing these services for the last five years on their own at a higher rate, so they're looking forward to getting a break. I had the most interesting conversations, actually, with the nonprofits, who were interested in wondering how our services would be, if we were cutting the rates, and it was a good opportunity to educate people who don't normally know what we do. But overall, the feedback was positive. People are very happy to pay less.
Counselor Levesque?
Thank you. You just mentioned about increasing programs. What type of programs?
We would do things like more art-based programming with the North Hampton Center for the Arts. We would work on getting free public Wi-Fi downtown, outside. You know, we'd work with our members also, we want to be able to respond to what our membership is asking for.
Any other questions of the proponent? Okay, well, it's from the council.
No, I'm asking for a point of information from you.
Sure.
And that is, I'm a plaintiff in both lawsuits. I also am on the committee that's known as No Bid. I think that I would qualify as being the opposition to the bid's petition, and I'd like to be heard briefly on some of the points.
And you anticipated the next phase of the hearing, so, if you'll just allow me, that's why I'm asking if there are other proponents, and then we have an opportunity. In fact, you're signed up, but you'll be second. Hope you can live with that. Are there any other proponents or anyone speaking to the positive in this request? Okay, thank you, Natasha. So now the opportunity for opponents, and I'll go by the signup list first, and then that doesn't preclude you from speaking. Remember, we are speaking about the three tiers of change that are being described, and please keep your remarks relative to that and your expression of opposition to that, or ambivalence or confusion, that counts too. So first up, Peter Tideman, please. You're done?
I spoke earlier.
Okay, so then, note your remarks for that. Okay, Alan, then you are up.
A few comments with regard to statements made on behalf of the bid petition by Natasha. First of all, I want to make sure that everyone understands that when this vote takes place, this renewal vote takes place, it will only be members, current members of the bid in good standing, who will vote. None of the opt-outs will have any say whatsoever in that vote. I also would like to point out that the state law doesn't have any quorum requirements, which means that if one bid member is the only voter, and that bid member votes to renew, the bid is renewed. And keep in mind, again, when you consider anything with regard to the bid, that the opt-outs, the non-bid members, represent 61% of all property owners within the Business Improvement District. That means that the majority are going to be forced by the minority to become members against our will.
Excuse me, excuse me, please.
No, this is relevant, because the rate, we will become subject to the rate, whatever it is, .25 or .50, if we're forced to become members. So it is relevant with regard to the issue of what the fee will be, because right now, we don't pay any fees, but if they renew, we will be subject to the fee that you're discussing right now.
And can I presume that you're speaking in opposition of the rate adjustment, then?
I'm not necessarily speaking opposition to anything, except my position is, I'm not in for it either, but my position is that this should be tabled. That's another point I'd like to make, is that the lawsuit that's scheduled for hearing for trial next month is the state lawsuit. The state lawsuit challenges the adoption of the bid itself. The federal lawsuit just challenges whether or not the bid should have the power to force non-bid members into membership. So if we're successful in the state lawsuit next month, it means that the bid did not exist ab initio, it was never properly adopted, and therefore, it will not exist anymore, unless they bring a new petition. So I want to, so that answers your question, what would happen if the lawsuit goes forward and we win? Means the bid doesn't exist anymore. And then, I'd like to also point out that the petition that you're going to consider isn't just a matter of the rate of membership fee, it also eliminates all residential condominiums and all residential rental properties of less than four units. Now, the language in the bid petition that talks about membership is part of the body of the petition. It is not part of the Business Improvement Plan part of the petition. Chapter 40, Section 9, is specifically limited to amendments and modifications of the Business Improvement Plan itself. It says nothing gives you no authority to deal with an amendment to the other parts of the petition. And I'd like you to keep that in mind. I mean, really, we already have two lawsuits, no one wants more lawsuits. I mean, unless anyone has any questions, I have.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Cheyman?
I just want to be clear that, I was going to ask you, would you rather we voted yes or no, but your clear statement was, what you would like us to do is just table this altogether.
I'd like you to table this until we see what happens with, at the very least, the state lawsuit, and then, and if for any reason we are unsuccessful in the state lawsuit, we'd want you to wait until the federal lawsuit is determined.
When was the state lawsuit filed?
It was filed one month after your city council.
Which was how many years ago?
Five years ago.
Right, so that, one of the things councilors need to know, that even though this is coming forward, as you probably know, you know much more about legal stuff than I do, but even though it's coming forward next month, it could still be a long time before we have a legal answer to this, right? You could go into that meeting and it could be continued again since when you walked in.
And, of course, it's up to the discretion of the judge as to when he makes his ruling at the trial. But right now, everything is being fine-honed. In other words, right now, there's, I'm sorry to use technical terms here, but right now, there's a Section 16 meeting scheduled with all the lawyers to talk about very specific issues that they want the judge to address. Some of those issues can be addressed by the judge without the requirement of testimony. They could just be legal research. So it's possible that some issues can be determined almost much sooner than other issues, and that any one of many of the issues that will be decided by the judge without necessary testimony, if we're successful on almost any of them, it's fatal to the existence of the bid.
So let me just ask you one thing. So supposing we don't delay tonight, we either vote yes or no, which is all we're being asked to do on the fee, and supposing we don't delay, what would the harm be in that if a decision then came forward? What is the downside of us doing that?
The harm is this. What the bid, what Natasha didn't say, is that this amendment that's being, these amendments, not just the bid fee, but eliminating residential condominiums and rental properties, this is a prelude to them holding their renewal vote. They want to make.
Excuse me, but I do understand that, so just to.
Okay, so what I'm saying.
So what I'm saying is, what would the harm, I understand, you're saying our preference would be, you delay this vote, you table it. I'm just asking, what would the harm be for us to vote either yes or no?
It would, it would.
And then the decision comes?
I'll be happy to tell you. It will precipitate, it will accelerate the renewal vote process, because they would never go forward with a renewal vote unless this amendment has been approved by your organization. And that's the effect it would have, an acceleration.
But then that's different than you're asking us to table the vote. So if you knew right now that we were going to vote no on this, would you be supportive of that?
I have no opinion, one way or another, I'm not in favor of the amendment. My only position, sir, as I've made quite clear, is that I would like to see it tabled.
So I'm a little confused, I just don't understand, I'd like to be clear about the harm it would do.
Sir, I'm not sure what else I can say that will keep you from being confused.
Maybe not. Yeah, okay, I'll ask that to someone else.
And actually, Doherty, you're signed up here, do you want to speak again? No, you're all set?
Doherty, if you can answer my question, I'll.
Doherty, you want to answer Paul's question? You're not obliged.
I'll try it with you too, see if you can help me out.
Eric, you're not yet, but do you want to answer that question?
I can try, because Alan was trying to answer it.
Coming up, and once again, identify.
So my understanding is that.
I'm sorry, Eric, can you identify yourself for the record?
Eric Schur. My understanding is that the amendment, they are, the bid is looking to exclude all of the residential condominium owners and complexes of less than four units, for the very reason that if those folks were able to vote, now, we're not able to vote. Chapter 40, the new legislation that was passed last August, does not give us a vote. So the only people that can vote right now on a renewal vote to make this membership continue to bid, the only people that can vote are the existing property owners within the bid, so long as everybody understands that. And that makeup is so few, when you take the city properties and you take the not-for-profits that the director talked about, the not-for-profits don't pay anything. The city doesn't pay, although the city does pay some in-kind, I believe in-kind, there might be some fees that the city pays as a lump sum. I don't recall, I haven't seen the most recent budget, but I do believe in the past there was a lump sum fee. But we are not able to vote, but yet, we're going to be pulled into this if this is allowed to move forward and if our lawsuit is not successful. So we're asking for you to table for several reasons. One, the lawsuit is being heard within the next month, in the month of April. And to get to your question, I don't think it's going to be months and months before there's a decision made. We've been at this for five years, have spent on both sides, and the city included, some substantial sums of money. It's a month away. My suggestion would be that the council table this, as I think there'll be a much clearer picture for everybody, one way or the other, once that's heard. Clearly, if we lose, I think everybody would then be very happy to see the bid fees cut in half. If we win, then no matter what you would be doing today, the city and the bid's going to have a fairly substantial problem. So the situation with regard to tonight and the second vote that you'd have, I think, gets back to what Alan is saying, that in terms of tabling this, everybody will have a very, a much clearer picture next month. And I don't know if that answers it, but I think.
You actually, you may not have answered it, but you were clear and it was helpful, but I still don't, so my specific question, although it was helpful what you said, I still don't see, I agree with you, it'll be clearer when the courts give a decision, it'll be clearer. I'm just not sure what the harm is. I'm not saying whether we're going to vote yes or no, three choices, we can vote yes, we can vote no, and we can table. I'm not sure what the harm is, because the court will make a decision, everything will become clear.
So if you vote in favor of what's in front of you, you allow the bid to exclude all of the residential condominium owners, who would be able to vote. Now, in the future, what's to say that the bid might decide to charge those residential condo owners? They have the ability to do so. You have the ability to approve it. And so, all of those residential condominium owners, if we so chose to go out and market and have those people come forward to help us with a vote, all of those folks potentially would vote no, because they would potentially have a fee they'd have to pay.
So that's, just so I understand, just want to clarify, so I'm with you. So therefore, that would be an argument for us to vote no tonight, because the fee wouldn't change, the residential folks would still vote. So I understand that. So a no vote would be something that, okay, we could, that would help us in a way, because these residential owners would be able to have a vote. We see this change here of both eliminating them as voters and the cut as just ways of producing more votes for them.
Right.
So I could understand your coming and saying, you know, we want you guys to vote no on this. That's pretty.
And there's one more piece to back up what Alan said, and I think you understood that. There is the ability for us to move forward with another lawsuit, which we really don't want to do. We hate the fact that there's two suits now costing everybody money. But the fact is, we don't believe that the legislation allows for the bid to adjust who's a member and who isn't a member, based on how the petition is now being adjusted. I'm not an attorney, I think Alan spoke about that for a few seconds, the city attorney's not present, but if the council were to get an opinion from city council, I do firmly believe that anybody that understands Chapter 40 and the legislation and how it was drafted and what the bid has the ability to do and not do, what you should be voting upon. I think the city also opens itself up in making this vote to another potential issue, which would potentially cost the city some more money.
So that, again, would be a case for you to say to us, guys, you should vote no on this.
Vote no or table until the suit moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jasper LaBianzki. No? Jim Winston, still here?
Left.
Left. That's it, we have signed up for speaking in opposition, is there anyone else?
I addressed what Inspector had asked, but I.
Do you want to speak separately?
Just very quickly, because it does relate to the fee structure.
That's fine.
You know, the director talked about the hotel fee being cut and talked about the business owners, you know, the fee being cut to . business owner's, you know, the fee being cut to point 0025. So I just want to bring to everyone's attention one point, that the existing hotel, one, existing hotel within the bid district, that the owner of the hotel is no longer part of the board of directors and is no longer supporter of the bid and does not want to pay a bid fee. I also want to talk to the other two hotels, or three or four hotels that are in town, depending upon what you consider the boundaries. But right outside of the downtown boundaries, there's a new hotel on Con Street. And a little bit further, there's a hotel, the Clarion Hotel, that's a quarter mile away from that. With this fee structure and with the inception of the bid that we've been living with now for five years, the city and the bid has really created a dual structure of business owner. So now, one hotel downtown would be required, if so passed, to have to pay a mandatory bid fee. But yet, that same traveler, whether it be a business traveler or a social traveler, that might stay at another hotel down the road is not having to pay that fee. Believe me, that fee is passed on to the customer. It's right on the bill of the Hotel North Hampton, you can see it. It's negligible, but it is another fee. More important, as was previously discussed by, I believe, a social worker who came forward, is that you're creating a situation where those of us that have to absorb these fees have to find money somewhere. There's new stormwater management potentially for these fees coming in, the CPA, the increased assessments, which therefore lead to greater taxes. So when you talk about this fee structure, it really is, it's a Trojan horse situation, because as much as they're lowering the fees, the more folks that are part of this, their budget's going to increase. You have inflationary factors that need to be considered, so that bid fee is going to keep increasing every year. You also have assessments that are going to increase. As those assessments increase, the bid fees increase. What that comes down to, no matter what this rate is adjusted to, someone has to pay the fee, which means that social worker on the second floor, or that restaurant on the ground floor, or that hotel, or hotel occupant, someone's paying for that. There's only so much those of us can do. My entertainment venues that are downtown have to compete with entertainment venues that might be right outside the district. But yet, I'll be required to pay a fee and someone else won't. When you add all this up and you take a look at it, it's created two classes of citizens, of businesses, business citizens, and it's really, it's unfortunate, because the majority, when you look at the map of folks downtown, if you exclude all of the city properties and all of the not-for-profits, which add up to millions and millions of dollars, there are very few business owners. In fact, you're looking at the majority in two rows of the folks here who are making up the majority of the bid proponents and the bid owners of property within the bid district.
Excuse me for interrupting, Eric, but again, what's more germane here, of course, and this actually speaks to Counselor Specter's point, is we're talking about lowering a bid rate, which, and you're talking more, you know, more, you know, you're not, we're not being petitioned to, at this point, to.
You're correct.
Agree with the existence of the bid, the law that established the bids, the efficacious application of the bid's maintenance. We're actually, this is, this hearing is exclusively devoted to whether we feel it's appropriate to lower the bid rate. And so far, the objection that I've heard is the concern, the Trojan horse argument.
Yes, right. And getting back on point, that's what I should have talked about.
Okay. Okay. I prefer.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to, in speaking in opposition? Yes, sir. Please step up and identify yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Ferroron, and I have four commercial units located on Strong Ave. And they're in a building that's perhaps the newest building where Skandehovians used to be. And four of those five commercial units, well, all five of them, are basically outside of the redrawn proposed limits of the, the present redrawn proposed limits of the bid. But what I'm concerned about, and I just bring this when I hear talk about the fee structure, is I'm seeing that before I fell within the bid structure and opted out, that is back in 2009, now I'm outside the bid structure, the fee is dropping, but I'm concerned of this, that if at some point or another, because they are able to, five years into this, change that, there is nothing to prevent them from enlarging the bid, the bid perimeter and bringing us back in. And in particular, that concerns me, because even though they're dropping the bid price down now to perhaps make it a more attractive thing for, for all of the commercial people that are either in the bid or that may be in the bid, there is no doubt in my mind that that will be a brief moment in history and will be well beyond, and it will grow and grow and continue to grow. And what worries me is, is so many of these units, right now, between 2009 and 2014, the commercial units here are really suffering, and they're suffering primarily, I believe, from the internet. There is a tremendous amount of, I see it in all of my units, people going in, sizing up the retail, deciding that, what the price is, looking at it, leaving, buying it off the internet. So what that means is currently, right now, I, before my people even start paying me rent, about $500 goes to taxes and to condo fees for the four units I own. If you add an additional amount on that they're talking about, I know they're talking about lowering it right now, but I think that it's not easily dismissed. This is part of the concern that I've got. For people who are just starting out in business and they're having a difficult time getting going, they're up against between 2009 and 2014, I'm telling you, the internet has ripped retail to shreds. If we're talking about adding that, I'm just concerned that it's one more thing that will make it very, very burdensome for small starter people to come into this town and set up. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. So if I could distill your argument, it is your concern about the camel's nose under the tent, I'm guessing. Is that a fair assessment? Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Actually, I, yes. Come on, identify yourself, please. Oh, whoops. You're next.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's fine.
That's great. I just, my name is Mary Beth Bergeron. I'm one of the owners of the Maplewood Shops down the street. I take a little bit of exception with what you said, that the only thing that you're voting on tonight is this deduction in fees, when in fact, there are other things that you're voting on contained within this proposal, and that is who's going to belong to it.
Well, it's, that is an appropriate point of conversation, yes. It's the, to discuss the modification of the terms and who's.
The full scope of modifications. So for me, as a person who opted out, as one of the owners of the Maplewood Shops, not seeing where there would be any advantage for us to be, participate in the bid, primarily because of our tenant makeup and because of the location of the Maplewood Shops. The Maplewood Shops has some 60 to 70 lineal feet of frontage on Con Street. That is the only area where the bid might be able to put a few planters. Those few planters, with the fee decrease, is going to cost the Maplewood Shops ownership approximately $11,000 for some planters and for some other things that they do, which I understand they participate, you know, you have street cleaning and that kind of thing. Well, down on Con Avenue, that really is not going to benefit the Maplewood Shops. So when we found out that this was being proposed, we contacted Mr. Yakuza, and we had a meeting with him and explained why we had first of all opted out, and second of all, why we should be carved out of the bid plan. And frankly, evidently, our property had been under discussion initially when the plan had first been proposed, because we really are a fringe property. My property is a fringe property. Mr. Yakuza told us that, unbeknownst to us, and we formally made the proposal that we be opted out, and he was to submit it to the board of directors. They subsequently sent us a map where we were carved out. So we have not been actively aggressive about challenging our participation in the bid and filing a third lawsuit, because we were under the impression that we were going to be carved out. Not only now are we not carved out, but we're going to be paying this $11,000 for some planters. And just to back that up, why we felt we didn't, we needed to opt out, we have five nonprofits in our building. We have three hairdressers, one barber, and one retail establishment, an herbal shop. Now, the herbal shop may actually benefit from the bid, marginally so. Not a lot of people are going to walk down the street, across the parking lot, to the herbal shop, because unless they really are after some herbs of the cooking variety. It's a destination location. Somebody got it. It's a destination location. So I guess what I'm saying to you is, for me, for my property, for my tenants, to whom I will pass along this fee, I assure you of that, may take some time, but I will pass it along to them, it is not a decrease in the bid fee, it is an $11,000 fee. So you're not really being asked to do just that as a whole here. You're being asked to, broadly speaking, approve not only the bid and the inability for people to opt out, but guised under this proposal.
Excuse me, but I'm going to respectfully disagree with that.
Okay.
That is not what we're charged with, and that is not our, we do it, nor is it our authority. Counselor Shara, you have a question?
When were you told that you were not going to be carved out, and were you given a reason as to why?
We were never told we were not going to be carved out. We were sent a letter. We were only given a copy of a map where we were carved out. I'd be glad to give it to you.
And so when did you find out that that wasn't the case?
Probably about, I don't know, maybe four or five months ago.
Okay. And did you ask as to why that had changed?
Yep. Mr. Yakuza just said to me, he presented it to the board of directors, and they just felt we should belong to it, without being given any reason why.
There's a kids' clothing store too, right? Is that a?
It's downstairs, which is not included in.
Oh, I see.
The square footage is not included.
Got it.
It's a used clothing store.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And please, I want to reemphasize that if you could keep your remarks focused on the decrease, the proposed decrease in fees, and also the reduction of residential requirements, the residential units that would come under this, please.
My name is Sean Hebert. I own the Plaza Building on Pleasant Street and Hampton Avenue. I would like to address, what you keep saying is, you know, we need to talk only about this vote. I think this vote is a very transparent motivation to renewal. They want to make it look sweeter, so this is, this really is about renewal vote. It's to make it more attractive. So the two are very connected, and they are, it is a very relevant conversation to talk about the bid in general, in this forum, sir, because I honestly think, this is all about the renewal. This is not about a fee reduction.
I'm sorry, but we are required by under laws to conduct the hearing to the petition. And what the intent and any other aspect of this can be vetted out in public, and as they make their case, they may not succeed or they may succeed, and that has absolutely no bearing on whether we've, on our vote tonight, and it has no bearing on the hearing. And that is why I ask, because we could be here until we all die of old age if we open it up for the broader philosophical discussion of the bid, which has been had and continues to be had in this community, in the state, throughout the country. I'm not discounting your comments or remarks, and I'm not even representing that I disagree with you. What I'm asking, though, please, for the purpose of this hearing, that we keep our remarks limited to that. So far, I've been fairly lenient on that count, and we have heard from any number of people why they don't like the bid, or like the concept of the bid, or the possibility of being part of the bid. That's nowhere near in this petition.
Right. My only argument is that the motivation behind this amendment is very relevant to your vote tonight, sir. I really believe.
Noted, and I appreciate your comments to that effect, and I think, I think, I think you can be confident the council is pretty aware that this is not just an arbitrary decision to start to cut rates and just hope things go well. And in fact, it was even represented by the proponents that this would make this more palatable, given the circumstance of mandatory enrollment. So unless you have any comments relative to the things that we're discussing under the hearing, you know, if you have an objection to the reduction of the requirements for residential units and an objection to the reduced fees, beyond, and I acknowledge, your objection is that, again, it's the camel's nose under the tent, or it's a Trojan horse argument that Eric presented. Is there anything more than that?
No. No.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. Anyone else? I think if Attorney Doherty would step up, please, and I think, and address principally the concern that was expressed, or the question that was raised about our ability to proceed with two pending suits, does that have any relevance or bearing on, in your opinion, I understand that you're not our attorney, but I would think your interest would be helpful.
Thank you. My name is Hamilton Doherty. I live at 48 College View Heights in South Hadley. I'm an attorney for the North Hampton bid. On your question, this is, although it certainly is tied into a lot of other factors that are related to it, the decision for you, and as you've described it correctly, is a yes or no decision, is really independent of either a subsequent renewal vote or the outcome of any of the litigation. It will, if you, if this petition is accepted, it will be effective on July 1, and it will go forward with the bid in whatever stage or whatever other circumstances are in place on July 1. There is a hearing date that is scheduled for the state court case next month. It is not the first trial date. It is a trial before a judge, so not only is the scheduling, but in terms of an ultimate decision, the timing is unpredictable, as are the efforts of an appeal by either party dissatisfied with the judge's decision. So there is no, there is no finality that's going to come out of that trial. Same is true of the federal case, which are different issues, much, much different issues. It is a much newer case, does not have a trial date, but is not going to get resolved in the near future.
And in your opinion, or are you representing that the process by which the bid is petitioned, and even the strategy, if we can call it that, that's, is that against the law, or is it conforming to the laws as it's laid out?
I think it's conforming to the law. And thank you for asking that question, because that touches on two points that I was going to make. The fee schedule that is before you tonight appears both in the petition by statute, by requirements from the statute. It appears both in the petition and in the improvement plan, which is a bid phrase for a business plan or a statute plan. The statute requires it to appear in both. And in addition, the boundaries of the district are, appeared in the original petition. So the boundaries of the district were established with your vote in 2009, and they're not going to get changed, except by another vote of the city council going through an amendment process, just like what we're going through now. There has been no amendment of those districts. There is in the petition, there is a kind of a meets and bounds property description of what is in the district, and there is a map. And there may be questions about certain properties at certain locations, but the definitions are, were established in 2009, haven't been changed. There is an amendment process in the statute that references, was to Section 9. And given the information that is both in the petition and in the plan, it really doesn't make any sense to say, well, the statute allows you to amend the plan, but doesn't allow you to amend the petition. That doesn't make any sense. So I think the statute has to be read, that the council, which approved the original petition, the original plan, has the authority to amend both of those. And that's the reason that both of those documents, the petition and the plan, were mentioned in the amendment petition.
And that speaks to, Mr. Shiman's suggested that the authority to modify the residential units does not come under the purview of 4009.
I'm not sure exactly that that's what is, but on that point, if I may, I'll read from the original, on the residential condominiums, to which there's been reference here. The original petition that was passed in 2009 said in the paragraph three, the same one that you paraphrased. you paraphrased or referenced, talking about the properties in the bid district, says, "All private and public property shall be included within the district with the exception of residential condominiums and single-family residences." And then it goes on with the fee schedule. Residential condominiums have been excluded from the bid from day one. They've never been subject to a fee, and that's not changed in its amendment. The original language does say "single-family residents." That, in fact, was different from what ended up in both the Articles of Organization of the bid district, and in the fee plan that was developed, where there are no fees charged for residential units of three... or, excuse me, residential properties of three or fewer units. That is, as I understand it, has always been the practice of the bid. It is not what it says in the petition, and it's not what it says in the plan. So, the amendment, as long as we were going to be here with an amendment anyway, there was an intention to make the petition and the plan consistent with what had been the billing practice. And that's why, in the amendment, the exception is specifically residential condominiums and exclusively residential buildings with less than four units. Both residential condominiums have never been included, never been billed, never had voting rights, had bid members, would not vote in a renewal vote. As it had been applied, owners of residential properties of three or fewer units have not been billed, and have not had a vote in the bid, or would not have a vote in the renewal.
Are there any questions of Attorney Doherty? Alan or Eric, you want to refute or challenge that?
Absolutely. I take issue with my brother attorney here. If he's completely mistaken about the membership of the residential properties in the bid, if he's correct, then all of the assents that were signed by residential condominium unit owners in support of the petition should be thrown out, because they are not members of the bid. It's incredible that he would make a statement like that, when the vast majority of the assents to the original bid petition, the vast majority, were from residential unit owners. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'd like to point out to the council, that a simple look at Section 9 of Chapter 40O, Section 9 is the section that they're citing as authority for what they're asking you to do. If you just look at it, you will see that it relates solely to the amendment of business improvement plans. It says nothing about giving you the authority to amend the original petition. Read it. Just look at it. Get a legal opinion. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alan? Get your folder. Attorney Doherty, you have the opportunity to respond?
Could I respond on just one issue, please? And that is the suggestion that there were residential owners, single-family owners, who signed the petition that's in front of you today, and that's not the case, and confirmed with the assessors through the city clerk's office. The petition that is before you today is signed by voting members of the bid, and it does not include owners of single-family residences. What the confusion may be, is in a different process, in the first petition establishing the bid, under a different section of the statute, and a different set of requirements of the number of owners, and which owners signed the petition to start the bid, residential owners would qualify for voters on that initial petition. And there were some. I don't know what the number is. There were some, but they had the right to vote at that time for the first petition. But on this amendment petition, there are no single-family owners... they may own single-family properties, but it's not as owners of single-family properties that they signed the bid, the petition.
Thank you for that distinction. Well, okay, Jordy or Eric wants to... you want to respond to that one point?
Say one word, that's cynical.
You were saying "that's cynical."
Yes.
Eric, is that what you wanted to say too?
No.
Okay.
But along the same lines. We wouldn't be here today...
Come to the microphone, please.
We wouldn't be here today. There wouldn't be two suits that have cost the city in the bid, and those of us that have funded the suits, the money, if counsel that came in front of the city council, counsel for the bid, counsel for the city, had done their job properly. And to hear the bids counsel now state that the residential condominium owners had always been excluded is insane to me. I'd love to take the tape of this meeting and put it in front of the judge when we have our case in front of the judge. They used those assents, they used and counted those votes of the residential condominium owners as non-fee-paying members, but those votes were counted. We've got the count. We can bring the count forward with the total amount of folks who signed those assents in favor of the bid. So, all along, there have been these issues with how the bid has conducted themselves. And if you're listening to this attorney now stating that that was incorrect, then the council's getting bad judgment, and I, as Alan had mentioned, I would highly suggest that you seek counsel to answer those questions, and not the bid counsel, because he's very incorrect. They can't have their cake and eat it too. They can't use those votes when they need them, and then say, "We don't want them now," when those same residential condominium owners, if faced with a vote, a renewal vote, understanding that they might in fact, down the road, be fee-paying members, would vote no. So, they want them out. And that's what you're voting on tonight.
Well, you...
This is a Trojan horse, regardless of what they're telling you.
So, and I noted that you principally take issue with the strategy.
Yes.
Got it.
My name is Claudio Bura, and I am on the Board of Directors of the bid, and I also own property in downtown. Just wanted to quickly say, and I'm going to just address the fee here very quickly, but I'm really proud of the bid and everything that it's done, and I don't see a Plan B. You know, the indentured slaves of the... what is it called again?
Honor Court.
The Honor Court. They're not coming back, and so, I've done my part, but... and this is where we're going to the fee. I am, however, tapped, and I don't want to pay the .005 anymore, and I don't care how long... I mean, I do care. I hope this thing gets resolved quickly, because everybody's getting sick of this, I'm sure, but I want to pay... I would like to pay less. And I, as a property owner here, I just... it's a burden to carry the rest of the town, and I'm tired of it, and I want to go to .0025, and I think it's a fair rate, and I hope you guys decide to pull the trigger on that. Thank you.
Counselor Spector?
Well, I'm not sure who would ask this question too, and it may be a fellow counselor...
I mean, the other opportunity, if you have no more questions, we can close the hearing.
And we can recognize somebody if...
And you can choose to recognize. Yes, sir.
My name's Alan Hankowski. I have a property on Crafts Avenue, and I hear a lot of things. Claudio just stating that the non-fee members are getting something for nothing, and by statute, that's excluded. Opt-outs are not supposed to get anything under the law. And if he's benefiting because he's got retail establishments, that's fine. That's in opposition to, let's say, the psychologists on the second floor who aren't getting anything. But just listening to this, and listening to the attorney, and knowing a little bit about it and the history, I think it's terribly... what you're looking at tonight is terribly confused. It may be time to really get an opinion, before you go vote on something that you shouldn't have, and now you do have another lawsuit.
Thank you very much. Anything else in public hearing? If not, I'm going to ask...
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public hearing. All those in favor? Public hearing is closed. We do have on our agenda later, the discussion and the vote on this, and actually, we're not obliged to actually vote on it now either, just... and I would ask the council's preference, and if there is a preference, with the bulk of the audience here tonight, well, let's say two votes, by the looks of it, are interested in the outcome of that vote, if we have it, so we can move it up on the agenda if you want. I don't know what's the...
I request we move it up on the agenda to...
I second that.
Okay. Is it your preference to move with the vote and discussion? Or would you like to defer that to the next meeting?
I would move the motion that's presented to us tonight onto the floor.
And motions are made to accept the petition, although... is there a second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Okay, for the purposes of discussion, and we'll start. Counselor LaBarge, did you want to start? No?
Oh.
You had your hand up.
Let's let somebody else speak first, and then I'll speak.
Okay. Counselor Carter?
Again, as you pointed out, Counselor Dwight, this is... as is usual, we take two votes on any issue, so there is obviously a two-week period between now and our second vote, should this even pass, when the votes are cast. So, I'm comfortable with having an additional two weeks, with also the request that we, you know, ask for the city's attorney on this matter to weigh in.
It wouldn't be the city solicitor we're going to have. We have a separate attorney for this.
Right, I understand it's Fitzgibbons, right?
Yeah.
Yes, so...
Attorney Fitzgibbons would.
Or even a memo that would address the...
Attorney Fitzgibbons reviewed this petition before it came to the city council, and has been working with the petitioners, and with the city clerk, and with the assessors, and has been monitoring this process. So, that has been reviewed, but if you would like something more formal on the questions...
I'm comfortable taking a vote tonight, and then also, I am sensing it would be useful to other counselors to either have issues addressed via a memo, or to have Attorney Fitzgibbons present at...
Certainly.
May I think there are specific questions, of course, that were brought up tonight, and that need clarification. I think more... less specific to the rate change. And also, I do not understand, despite the arguments made, how we would be constrained because they're pending suits. That doesn't seem to... I don't understand how that could possibly be, because we are abiding by existing law.
I believe the term Trojan horse has multiple applications.
Well, it swings both ways.
That's my...
Yes, exactly.
So, continue your sentence.
You can finish, and then it's Counselor Spector.
First of all, I want to thank everybody who came up and gave us their... who sensed on this matter. I know it's very complex, and that there's a lot at stake here. In this particular matter, the lowering of the fees and the amended structure, I am comfortable supporting that this evening. I am very much in support of the bid, and I appreciate all of the value that that brings to our downtown, in terms of the services and the immense amount of work that has gone into the creation of the bid, and the events, and the commitment, and the dedication to improving the downtown. At the same time, I have my own issues with some, you know, language that's in there, and some of the goals that, you know, may conflict with my... some of the focus on seeking ordinances, anti-solicitation ordinances, and things like that that we've had in the past. That's been my bailiwick, however. I'm very comfortable with supporting this tonight, and I would ask colleagues to support it as well.
Counselor Spector?
Yeah. Counselor, I think you pointed out what I was going to say, but I do think it's worth repeating of what we're voting on, and we're not voting on whether the bid's a good or bad thing, whether the services it provides are valuable, the right services, and we're not even voting on whether this should be mandatory or not. And as one person who I did say at that meeting, and supported the bid initially, and used the argument that it was voluntary, and I find the state's action making it mandatory something that feels... they're imposing this on the city. But it's not something that the bid asks, it's not something that the counselors asked for. Our vote here is, we have three choices. We can table this, we can vote yes, or we can vote no, and we should look at what each of those choices are. I don't see tabling this. Again, I didn't get an answer to what harm would be if we table it. Yes, there could be a decision by the court in a month. Anyone want to bet me that that doesn't come about in a month? I'll take a bet, and I'll give good odds on that, that this decision will not come down, or that it does come down in the next six months, that somebody won't appeal that decision. So, it's taken five years till now, we could be looking at another couple of years of the decision, and let's be straight and honest about that. And even if the decision, the outside chance it did come down in the next couple of months, well, then it would... if it came down on the side that the bid, there were illegal parts of it, then, you know what? That would clarify a lot here, and maybe the whole bid would then dissolve. If we vote no on this tonight, then it means that the old fee structure stays in place. And I'm hearing that what they would like to do, regardless of what kind of motives we attach to what a vote would look like, that would be the way that if that vote were to then come through, and folks say, "Yeah, we're going to continue the bid," well, then the fee structure would be at that higher rate. And so, I'm going to support the lower... because we don't have other choices. That's not what we're voting on here. I wish we were voting on the state legislature's ruling. I think... I wish we had jurisdiction over them, but we don't. What we're voting on is whether or not we support this particular petition to lower the rate, and I'm going to support it.
Any other else? Comments? Counselor O'Donnell?
I think it might feel good to cut a rate in half, so I support that. I think if we take no action, then the time will come, and there'll be more businesses in the bid, and they'll be paying the high rate that they do today. So, I support reducing the fee. To me, it's pretty simple.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes. I'm very pleased to hear that at least we'll have, I think it was attorney... what was his name? Fitzgibbons, and getting some legal opinion from him, because I am having some problems about some of the language that I have heard tonight about the two lawsuits. I think the bid has done an excellent job in the city, an excellent job. Would I want to pay what they're paying right now? No. If I was a property owner, commercial, or whatever here, down in a district area, and going through the recession that we did go through, you did survive, you did make it, and thank you for being who you are. But I feel we are strictly talking about this fee structure. I will support it tonight. This is the first vote. Hopefully, I will get more calls, but I think once we hear from Attorney Fitzgibbons, it's probably going to make me feel a little bit better about the direction I'm going to go in my next vote. That is very critical for me, so I will support this tonight.
Anyone else? I'd like to acknowledge, first of all, the concerns that were expressed, even though it isn't necessarily, as I pointed out, necessarily germane to the discussion on the fee issue, but I don't think it's fair to ignore them, and all the pressures that the downtown businesses are feeling. And by the way, I'm a victim. You're looking at an unemployed city counselor, whose job went the way of the internet. Gobble it up, change it, my business doesn't exist anymore. What you also heard tonight were discussions about a stormwater fee, and whether it applies to the people who live out in Lindsay Avenue in Hatfield and don't benefit from any services. In fact, actually, every discussion tonight, talking about even about Forest Street, all actually, we're talking about a system, and a system comprised of individuals working together to create and promote a better system, not individual islands of enterprises, and not individual human beings who were just fortunate to live next door to. This, the bid... I, you know, I've spoken with people about this. I was an agnostic about the bid. I think it's a... I think any number of state mechanisms... I think it's a, I think any number of state mechanisms to get around the fact that they're supposed to be charging progressive tax based on ability to pay, but no, in their clever way, we have a lottery, we've got casinos, we've got medical marijuana, we've got, we've got the, we have enterprise funds, we have all sorts of gee whiz, gosh dang devices in which to circumvent an honest collection of revenue for the greater good. Oh, that's where I sit on that. And as Counselor Spector said, I don't get to do a damn thing about that. I don't have the authority, maybe you're all breathing a sigh of relief in that respect, but the fact is, is that, yes, these may be silly devices, and yes, they actually, they're intrinsically unfair. There's a whole lot of things that we discuss that actually ultimately do not necessarily subscribe to the ethos of fairness. But the fact is, is what the objective is, and this is what I would hope people would start to concentrate on, even regardless of where you sit on this, but that this is about us. When you say the city this, the city that, we're talking about us, all of us, who contribute to the welfare of the community and its survivability. That's my come-to-Jesus talk, that's it for that. But as to this particular issue, it really, if this, if you subscribe to the fact that this is part of a strategy, and I'm not naive enough to think that it isn't, I think absolutely. I think if I'm in the bid, and I'm on the bid board right now, and suddenly I'm faced with, and I don't think they're excited about this prospect, faced with the prospect of suddenly a collection of people who are required to be in there and consequently, probably not really keen on it, that you want to soften the blow. If that strategy works, good on them. If it doesn't, too bad. I don't vote on their strategy. We're not voting on their strategy. We're not voting on the efficacy of the bid or the ethics of the bid. We're not voting on any of those things. We have a petitioner before us who's legally incorporated, at least until such time that if the suits determine otherwise, but currently, as we understand them, they're legally incorporated and abiding by all the edicts laid out by the state, and they're asking us to reduce fees to their membership. And I can't make a cogent argument to say, no, you can't reduce fees. That's stupid. I don't think I'd hear any, I don't, I mean, so far, the only objection I heard was that it's a bad strategy, it's a clever ruse, and that may or may not be true, and I wouldn't even argue that point one way or the other. But I actually respect every person who spoke tonight, including the proponents and opponents, and I think their objectives are motivated by any number of things. None of them suspect, all of them valid. So now the charge that I have, and I would agree with this, I think it is an appropriate vote to reduce the rates. What I, the only question I have, and I want, I do want clarification on, is what Mr. Attorney Scheiman had mentioned about the authority to make the adjustment for residential units. That does need some clarification, and I hope to have that by the time we have the second vote. And to that end, it is also my intent to vote in the affirmative for this petition. And with that windy, gusty amount of stuff, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the council? And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Carter?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Carter?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scher?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
The vote passes in first reading and will be reconsidered in the next council meeting in April.
Request a recess?
There's been a request for recess. We are recessing for seven minutes, please. Thank you. Hello, we're back from the recess, we're in the North Hampton City Council meeting. This is March 20th, 2014. I'm Counselor Bill Dwight, I'm the council president, providing sometimes. Next up, we have a presentation of the forestry plan for the North Hampton water supply area. I would ask, well, actually, it's part of the presentation, so we don't need to recognize them. Jim, who do you have with you? You have five people?
I got more outside.
Well, in the interest, I want a good presentation of this, but of course, I'm also concerned about the time as well, and I just want to note that this is for informational purposes for the council, the, clearly, you understand, we've all experienced some outreach by some residents, and one in particular about the concern about the forest management plan and how it's being executed in the water protection areas, and the reason we requested this meeting was informational for the counselors to understand as they go forward. There is no vote associated with this, and point in fact, I should mention that the council really doesn't have an authority here. We don't, we don't authorize the plan, we don't approve, we do have influence, we do not have authority, and I think the distinction is rather important to note. But we are also the point of contact for the community, and as such, we're asking for this informational meeting. With that, then, after being all blowhardy like that, I'm going to ask you to be succinct. So-
Okay, you started by asking, I'm Jim Laurel, the city engineer, and I work in the Public Works Department of the city of North Hampton. I'll be providing the presentation tonight, you have handouts that were circulated a little bit earlier. I had planned on doing the presentation entirely myself, we have other people here, depending on questions that happen or come up. I have Nicole Sanford, who helped prepare the presentation, is here this evening, as well as Mike Maury, the city's forester, our consulting forester, is with us. And of course, Ned Huntley, the director of Public Works, is here as well, so if things come up-
And you want to just note that Doug's here, too? Doug McDonald's just, he, you know, he doesn't, he's not here, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
Doug McDonald's here. He's interested as a resident about the forestry, but he's more interested in the stormwater utilities.
Right, right.
So he'll have a long evening.
Kill him off later.
Okay. So, can I start?
Please.
Great. So, thanks very much for asking us to come this evening to talk about the forestry program. It's actually a program that we're quite proud of, so I'm happy to be here and describe to you that some of the things that we're doing in the watershed. I wanted to thank the counselors that took the time this weekend to take a walk around in the woods with Mike Maury and myself, I think that was clearly educational, I think it's great that you came out to take a look at what we're doing. So, I guess, Mary, I'm going to kind of move along here. So, presentation overview?
Could we lose this row of lights, or does it, next?
Maybe, I think it's split down the middle.
Let's see. Even this side, yeah, that's perfect.
That's great. So, presentation overview, I'm going to talk a little bit about the water supply reservoirs and the watersheds in terms of where they are. Some of the listening audience may not know exactly the areas that we're talking about and walking. Just going to talk a little bit about watershed protection, which is sort of the umbrella that the forestry program falls under, and then we'll have time for questions if folks have questions, if the counselors have questions when we get to the end. Okay. So this map, which is probably a little bit hard to see, shows the water supply locations. The city has three main drinking water supply reservoirs. So from the upper part of the slide is the Ryan Reservoir and the West Whately Reservoir, and then just a little bit down from there is the Mountain Street Reservoir. The reservoirs, actually, they're not located in North Hampton, they're located in Williamsburg, Whately and Conway, and some in Hatfield, so that just gives you a little bit of orientation. Some people still think that the Roberts Meadow reservoirs that we have by Musante Beach are the city's public water supply, and that hasn't been the case for quite a while. Next slide, please. So, Mountain Street Reservoir, just to give a sense of the size, the reservoir is shown there in blue, the black line surrounding that shows the limits of the watershed. The watershed for Mountain Street Reservoir is about 531 acres. Of that total amount of land, the city owns 321 acres of the watershed, so a pretty good percentage of the watershed there is protected. The city's largest reservoir is the Ryan and West Whately Complex. This slide shows the two reservoirs. Ryan is a much larger reservoir, and the watershed, in turn, is much larger. The city owns about 1,667 acres surrounding these two reservoirs in this, in this area. A slide, just to give you a sense of land ownership within the watersheds, sort of the lighter green color shows the property that's owned by the city of North Hampton, and the darker green is land that's owned by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation, that's the Conway State Forest, sort of the upper-left part of that slide. So it gives you a sense of the ownership, the amount of property within the watershed that the city owns. The key elements of watershed management, the things that we practice in Public Works routinely here for the city, basically is set under a watershed resource protection plan. It's a document that's required by the State Department of Environmental Protection, and it outlines a lot of different things that we do to protect the city's water. Two of the main things are a land acquisition program and the forestry program. Land acquisition is something that is very, obviously very protective, if you can remove land from development and control that property, then that is probably the most protective way of protecting the watershed for the city. We actively send out letters to folks that own land within the watershed and express an interest in purchase if they're, if they're ever interested in selling. Of course, the forestry program, I'll be talking about more tonight. And I think the last bullet here is that this is really a long-term plan, it's a plan that gets laid out in decades to protect the city's water supply. And I always remember Jim Dostal, who was on the Board of Public Works for a long time, and one of the things that Jim always used to tell us is that we do a lot of things day to day. We get a call to fill a pothole, we get a call to trim a city tree, these are things that come and we take care of them and they're done. When you think about water supply, Jim says you should always remember, was at the turn of the century that the Board of Water Commissioners in the city of North Hampton had the forward thinking enough to establish a system that would provide the water that the city relies on today, and it's a very good system, and we have plenty of water. And Jim says you should always remember that in the activities that you do for the city. This is really one of those key areas in terms of forestry management and land acquisition where we're focused on the long term. There's a lot of things, the city will see the benefit when, you know, it may be decades from now, we may not be around when we see some of the benefits, the planning that we're doing now, but it's really a long-term vision, and I'll be talking about that a little bit when we get into the forestry part. So I mentioned the watershed resource protection plan, and that was originally drafted in 1994. The plan was required by the state because at that time, the city had a filtration, water filtration waiver. Basically, from the regulatory authorities, there's a law that requires that surface water reservoirs, like the city has, they have to be filtered, and we had a waiver from that requirement, and a key component of that waiver is to make sure that the raw water going into your reservoir is clean and safe. The Quabon Reservoir, to this day, still has a filtration waiver, they have a watershed resource protection plan and forestry programs that allow them to maintain the waiver. We updated the plan most recently in 2011. The plan identifies a lot of natural characteristics and land use activities and threats to the water quality within the watershed, and then it lays out actions that we can take to minimize potential adverse impact to the water quality. And as I mentioned, ongoing land acquisition, forestry elements are a pretty key part of that plan, and ultimately, the maintenance of, the fact that we maintain the plan, we do get credit from DEP in terms of a water treatment credit, because they view the plan as resulting in cleaner water entering the reservoir and a slight reduction in the amount of disinfection that needs to happen as a result of that. So, a quick update on land acquisition. I think as most of the counselors are aware, Public Works in the city have been very active in the last few years in purchasing property. Since 2009, about 171 and a half acres have been purchased. We've got about another 80 acres of property, we're talking to property owners right now about purchasing land. And ownership of property in undeveloped forested state is really the most protective for water, so a key component of what we do is trying to buy the land and protect it from development. This slide here, just, it shows, and this is a little bit hard to read, it just basically shows there are a number of parcels that we're looking at, either we've purchased them recently or other parcels that we're having ongoing discussions with owners about. But the other important part of this slide, I wanted to say, was that it's an ongoing program, and the funding for land acquisition usually comes from three potential sources of money, the water enterprise fund, the timber revenue account, and state grants. The timber revenue account was really the main way that the city used to buy land in the watershed a decade or two decades ago, based on timber revenues from forestry work in the watershed, that money went into a specific account, and then the Board of Public Works would use that account to purchase land. Now, we've bought a lot of land in the last few years, as I just indicated, the timber revenue account balance, I think, is zero at this point, and we'll be building that back up, and I'll talk about the finances a little bit later in these slides, but these are the sources of funds that we typically rely on. We've been pretty successful in getting state grant money, I think, as the counselors are aware. So we hired a team of scientists and foresters to help put together the forest stewardship plans for us. The goal right from the plan, which I'll read, is promote and sustain a diverse, healthy and vigorous forest, and maintain associated infrastructure in good operating condition so that the primary goal of water quality protection and secondary goals of long-term timber revenue and habitat diversity are served. So that's sort of the overarching goal that we use in all the decisions that we make as part of the forestry program. So a little overview of the forestry program. The city actually has a long history of working in the watershed, and I think it goes way back, if you look in the forest stewardship plan, the city used to cut trees down in the watershed to heat the water department with wood, which I think goes back to sort of the mid, early 20th century. But more recently, in the 80s through the 90s, we had a forester that worked closely with the Public Works Department. Logging was active at that time, revenues from the work that was done was put into the timber revenue account, as I had mentioned. The forestry management program was dormant for over a decade, with some transitions within the department and the fact that the forester that the city was working with had passed away. So there was a transitional period, there were nothing really happened in the watershed in terms of forestry. We picked that up really around in 2011 with a request for proposals, where we had solicited licensed foresters and scientists to help us develop these new plans. Part of the plans include the history inventory and assessment of the current forest, they outline, they outline city goals and steps, implementation steps that can be taken to help achieve those goals. We made the, we made the decision at that time when the stewardship plans were put together to also add sort of a green certification process level, which involves additional input and oversight from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, so that wood products that come out of the work that we do are certified as being green and sustainable. The forest stewardship plans were ultimately approved by the state DCR. The plans cost about $35,000 and change. It was a DCR grant that provided about $21,000 that went toward the cost of preparation of those plans. So that gives you a little bit of an overview of how we get up to where we are today. In the stewardship plans, there's a section that describes the watershed forest in terms of an ideal condition, and the condition that we're aiming for here in the long run is a diverse forest of vigorous site-adapted native trees and shrubs. We're looking for trees to be able to grow to a mature size, and we're also looking for a variety of forest regeneration with desirable trees, so different types of trees, and I'll be talking about this in a minute. And we're looking for more of a multi-aged forest than we have now. The land that we own used to be mainly in farming at the turn of the century, and the reforestation of all those old farms in that area all happened around the same time, so what happened, when you walk around out there, you'll see that the age of the trees pretty much are fairly uniform, and that's something that we're looking to change, to allow some of those trees to grow to old, mature, beautiful heights, and to also have more younger trees in the understory, so that's a key component of what we're trying to accomplish. And then, these conditions of sort of the ideal forest are essential characteristics of a sustainable forest filter for water supply, and forest filter is sort of a term that's used in the water supply industry to reflect the fact that high water quality results from a forest that's well managed. I wanted to talk a little bit about the forest in transition. There was some, there was some quotes in the paper about forest health, and I think those were a little confusing, because we're not actually saying that the forest is not healthy, and we're trying to make the forest healthier, but what we want to point out is that the forest is in transition, and- But what we want to point out is that the forest is in transition, and it's really interesting to learn more about this. I didn't know a lot about this when we started this work. And having the foresters and scientists that we're working with provide a lot of information really allows you to understand in a lot more detail the things that are happening in the forest that the casual observer wouldn't notice. And there's a few of them I've got listed here. There's a general decline of hemlock trees related to elongate hemlock scale, which we have a fair amount of in the watershed, and also the woolly adelgird, which we have some, but I think the scale is more of a problem from what I understand at this point. There's a decline in red pine plantations that were planted by the city decades ago, mainly because of a variety of diseases and pests, and we'll talk about that in a minute. There's also a decline in white ash and beech tree. We have significant interfering vegetation factors. We have a lot of oriental bittersweet in some areas, not all areas of the watershed, but in some areas we have bittersweet that's quite problematic. And we also have some old grapevines as well, which also are interfering with the growth of some trees out there. I just mentioned that the forest in general is about, it's around the same age, so what's happened is we have a very closed canopy within the forest, and I'll talk about that a little bit. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that really at any point, because of different types of weather conditions, you can have environmental disturbance, whether it's a hurricane or tornado or ice storm, snowstorm in October, whatever the condition can be. There are other things that can really have an impact on what the forest looks like. So I've got a few slides here that will show you some pictures of the things that I was just talking about in terms of the forest in transition. This first photo shows wind shear that happened and cut off the top of these hemlock trees in a summer microburst back in the summer of 2011. And forests can be impacted by severe weather, as I had just mentioned. This photo shows really sort of a barren area under a group of hemlocks, so a hemlock understory, with all the trees starting with the same general timeframe in terms of growth. The forest lacks a lot of sort of variety of features and configurations, and some of the, we just don't, there's obviously not a lot of or any young trees growing up under this hemlock understory. So that's something that, through the logging that we're doing and some of the silvicultural activities that we're doing, we're looking to open up areas like this to allow sunlight to come in and other types of trees to move in and start to grow. This slide shows this interfering vegetation, the oriental bittersweet vine, which I described a minute ago. This is up in the Mountain Street Reservoir area. The rottany tree is under that bittersweet. I think you can see that that would be a pretty poor picture if you were trying to show somebody what a forest looked like. Some of these areas where the bittersweet is really, it grows to that amount of thickness and matting over the forest area would require a considerable amount of effort to bring that type of land back to a forested condition. And that's a real issue in terms of land management from a water supply perspective. I'll talk about that a little bit more as we go on. Here's a picture of a red pine plantation that was planted probably 80 years ago or so. Definitely in decline. These have a, the red pine is attacked by an array of issues. Ironically, when I see these trees fall over, they were planted in the plantation originally by the city, should be harvested as a way of raising revenue. And they've sat there, and I think they were thinned out at one point, but clearly nothing has happened in terms of that part of the forest. At this point, if these trees aren't salvaged within the next 10 years or so, probably most of them will end up on the ground. And there's some bittersweet in that area as well, so it's a challenging part of the forest management for us. There's a picture of a grapevine. I had varying photos, I was trying to figure out what to show to try to illustrate this. I think what I want to say about this slide is that grapevines tend to grow along with a tree, and they can grow up to the crown of a tree and actually smother the canopy of a tree and cause a lot of problems in some areas of the forest. We have a fair amount of grapevine. What this shows really is the size of that vine and how long it's been growing to get to reach that diameter. So you get a sense that some of the forest land, which used to be an orchard or other parts of a farm, have a lot of these types of conditions that we're trying to deal with There's another picture right in front, some people may have seen this. This is right in front of the Mountain Street Reservoir. The tall trees there are red pine, and there's a lot of interfering vegetation, and there's some bittersweet. There's also some poison ivy vines and other things that are growing up there. This type of situation is very close to the water. Probably only mechanical controls could be used to try to get some of these vines under control. The trees, as they stand like that, can't be harvested or used really for much of anything. And eventually, if we don't do something to control the vines and try to regenerate the forest in this area, these trees will fall, and the bittersweet will pretty much just take over and create a mat like I was showing in the previous photo. Here's a picture of the elongate hemlock scale. This is a photo log that we had posted on our website. It's just a, you know, a pretty good picture, I think, of what's impacting a lot of the hemlock population in our area and in the watershed. We also have evidence of some woolly adelgird in the watershed as well that's having some adverse impacts on the health of some of the hemlock trees. So moving to the next steps, that was sort of the forest in transition, a lot of slides that show what we have and some of the conditions that we're trying to work with. We have a number of silvicultural practices that are defined in the stewardship plans, basically logging and timber harvest, some of the things that are described, and certainly the part of the plan that has got everybody's attention at the moment. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how these plans are put together, some of the factors that we consider when we consider doing logging in the watershed. I think it's important to note, the first bullet there, it says, "We don't plan on doing any cutting where the land is too steep, where there are wetlands, feeder streams, vernal pools, or where we'd just simply be too close to the reservoirs, or if there are too many invasives." These are some areas that we just, we totally avoid even considering doing logging. So for the Ryan West Waitley reservoirs that I showed you earlier, of about 1,700 acres that we own, we determined, there's about 1,700 acres that are suitable for some type of logging, and there's about 630 acres we've identified right off the bat as no cut. So it's about 27% we identified in the stewardship plans where we wouldn't do any work. That doesn't mean we're going to do, we're going to do cutting in all the 1,700 acres, it just means that the first screening process is to identify where you don't even want to think about doing any logging. We went through the same type of analysis on the Mountain Street Reservoir, and we came up with about 96% of the watershed area that we own is no cut because we have a variety of issues out there with interfering vegetation, too close to the water, too steep, you know, these other sorts of things. We're taking into account, and we're proposing that the majority of the Mountain Street Reservoir not be logged at this point. Some of the other goals of the silviculture are really to promote mature white pine and red oak. There's a lot of crowding in the canopy and thinning, and doing some of the other logging that we're doing will actually help promote more mature heights and a health of the white pine and red oak. And also providing more sunlight, so providing more sunlight around those crowns of existing trees that we didn't cut will help them, and creating sunlight that reaches the forest floor will also help with multiple canopy heights as smaller trees begin to grow in those areas that are open. We're also looking at less reliance on certain tree species, non-native type trees that are in the watershed disease trees or trees that are impacted by pests. So while we're not targeting any specific type of tree removal, what we are saying is that there are certain trees, like red oaks, white pine, that are very, very healthy in the watershed, and they grow and they last for decades and decades. And those are the types of things that we're trying to encourage in the forest. And I have a note, I've got these notes written here. I have the word patience on this. These are timeframes, these are not our timeframes, the things that we're doing. The timeframe that we're looking at right now is when you walk out there or you see a picture of a stump, that is today. But that's not why we do this work. We do this work because we're 20 years, 40 years, 60 years, trying to advance the health of the forest, and these aren't time scales that we're used to. So you have to have a little bit of a vision to understand what it is that is being accomplished here and recognize that there's a very good chance that the full impact of what we're doing, you will not see. I think that it's important to remember. Okay, next line. A little bit about interfering vegetation, some of the bittersweet vines, the grapevines, some other invasive species that we have out there that I haven't mentioned. As I did mention, it's a serious problem. If you look in the forest stewardship plan, we actually ranked all the watershed land based on the type of, the type and amount of interfering vegetation that it had there, and we used that as a decision-making tool. But as we move on, we'll be talking a little bit more about logging in a minute, but because of this large degree of infestation, we have to come up with a strategy to deal with it. So for now, as we start logging, we're avoiding it, and we're not making it worse through the things that we're doing. It's just not a condition that we want to make worse, and we're avoiding it, and that's why we ranked all the watershed lands, so we figured areas we felt would be safe to work. There are mechanical control methods to control some of it, some of the grapevine work. If you cut the grapevines and it's in a shaded area, those grapevines won't be able to grow back. The bittersweet is a slightly different type of problem, and there's been a fair amount of discussion around about the use of herbicides in the watershed. It's mentioned in the plan, and I guess I'll acknowledge that as the city engineer and the people that are responsible for the city's watershed, actually saying the word is something that we get paid to do. I know it's hard to believe, but herbicides are part of any thinking related to dealing with interfering vegetation. We have not made the decision to use herbicides, the word herbicide is mentioned in the plan. There are public water suppliers that use integrated vegetation management, which is sort of a combination of mechanical controls and hand application of herbicides. Providence Island uses IVM-style management for interfering vegetation in their watershed. But we realize it's a very serious question, something that we don't take lightly, something that the Board of Public Works is very interested in. We've talked to them preliminarily about it when they approved the stewardship plans, and they wanted to know more about it. And we don't have any approval from the board to use herbicides, but it's something that is a very important consideration and an important part of the discussion. And to pretend that it's not, just, we wouldn't be doing our due diligence to pretend that that was not something that water suppliers did, or it was a tool that people could consider. So that's sort of the interfering vegetation part of it. We are getting ready to do some of the cutting of the grapevine, some of those mechanical controls, which we can do, which are less controversial. So we're starting to do what we can, but a lot of important questions that we'll be This next slide, I was trying to explain to the councilors during the site walk over the weekend about logging, in that it's not deforestation, we still have a forest that's out there. I think people will be relieved to know. But there's been a lot of numbers that have been thrown around too, and I'll readily admit, the numbers are confusing when you look at the number of acres to be cut. So I came up with an example. So the first bullet is, under the cutting plans that we have out now, and our plans are to cut 341.5 acres. Now, if I just met you on the street and I told you that, and I didn't explain what it meant, you would think that we were going to cut 341 and a half acres, which is a pretty large number. I mean, that would be, probably would get my attention and your attention. So what does it mean? If we look at an example of, we've numbered the stands, the foresters have numbered the stands. If we look at Stand 19, the total stand area is defined as 45 acres. The cutting plan says that 27 acres of that 45 will be cut. So it seemed, you seem to indicate that that's about, you know, half of the amount of the stand, and 27 acres seems like a lot. By the time we actually issued the cutting plan and advertised it, the 27 acres was advertised as 20 acres. But more importantly, if you look at the actual trees that are to be removed and the openings that are to be created, within that 20 acres, there's only an opening of about an acre and a half that's actually created. So the numbers are difficult in the forestry business to understand exactly what they mean, and we've had a couple of forest walks, and when you can see the work that's being done, it gives you a little bit more of an appreciation of the work that's actually being done, rather than just reading it on the plan. And we do encourage people to read the plans, but I guess that would be my word of warning that if we say we're cutting 341 and a half acres, we're not really cutting 341 and a half acres, it's something that's a very tiny fraction of that. So we had some questions about the logging details. Do we just allow the logging companies to come in and cut the trees that they like and do what they want to do and leave after we tell them what area we want them to do? And it's actually quite a bit different than that. Every tree in the stand is marked by the forester. So if a tree is to be removed, it's marked, if a tree is to stay, it's marked. So the trees that are protected and wanting to be logged are identified in blue paint. Access and log landings are defined in the plan. So the routes where they go, we tell them where the equipment can drive and how they get to where they need to go. If they're going to stack logs as part of the project, then we identify where that can happen. And we can also identify the time of year restrictions, so if there are certain reasons for habitat reasons or other important reasons in terms of sensitivity of the watershed to certain things, we'll identify time of year restrictions. And we can also, and we do specify the type of equipment used with, keeping in mind specifying equipment that would have the least impact on the land. This photo shows a blue arrow on that tree. The black birch is marked with an arrow, the arrow indicates, that's the main travel route that the loggers should use. The black birch also has a horizontal stripe, which means it'll be counted as timber and it'll be cut by the logger as they're out there. The black birch beyond the tree with the arrow is marked for firewood. So we carefully lay out the travel routes and we carefully determine which trees will stay and which will go. And if you go out there, you'll really see, in some areas that have been logged, it's really hard to tell. You have to be a little bit of a Sherlock Holmes to figure out what was actually done because the work was so carefully laid out, and it's really hard sometimes just to tell where it was done. This is a picture of a timber harvester. This type of machine, which we used on a cutting project that we're involved in right now, is helpful when there's a large number of small or medium-sized trees to be cut that don't have a lot of value. The work gets done in a pretty efficient manner. The logs, the trees are cut and then logs are left in small piles that are picked up by a forder, and I have a picture of that. Larger trees are still cut by a logger standing on the ground using a chainsaw, so that will be something that you'd be more used to seeing. But these types of equipment are very efficient. We had a timber forder that was working, collecting logs in the forest over the weekend. I think the councilors on both days were able to see. This piece of equipment, which is, it's actually, it's impressive to watch at work in the watershed. It's, for a large piece of equipment, it's graceful in terms of its ability to pick up very heavy things and to store them in the back and get them to the log landing. It does a good job, and it prevents damage to the trees in the forest that we want to leave untouched. I've got a few photos here now of the results of some of the work that we've done. And I think, I can't help but think of this analogy, if there are any hockey players that are with us either on TV or here within the room. When you learn to play hockey, one of the things that they tell you is you always need to look up, because if you don't, there's a good chance you'll be checked or something else that will be, provide a little discomfort for you. And that's what I think about when we do the logging. So in this particular case, Mike took a picture of a thinning project that we did, and what you see is that these crowns of these red oaks are free to grow. These will be pretty happy trees when it starts to get a little warmer, because they were really surrounded by a lot of other trees in a very thick canopy with a lot of competition, and they were unable to spread out. So in this particular case, by opening up the crowns of these trees, these trees will grow taller, more vigorous, and stronger, and they'll grow for decades. Another thing about these photos on the, we've got dead hemlock. photos on the, we've got deadlock, dead hemlock, excuse me, on the right side of the oaks that we left, because that'll provide a range of habitat for a range of species, including woodpeckers, birds, and other small mammals. And we have other hemlocks in the, in the background. It's a little hard to see, but you can see that the crowns are, are thinning, and that's probably because of the scale and woolly adhesion that I talked about a minute This is a picture of a, of a logging road with a stream crossing, so probably one of the most sensitive type of logging roads that we would have on a logging job. Generally, we avoid all stream crossings. We, it's not something that we seek to do. On, on occasion, on a project, you'll have a stream crossing like we show here. In this particular case, the logger used slash in small trees that were laid down on the approaches to the stream and in the stream to create the stream crossing. At the end of the job, the poles and the, and the slash in the stream will be removed, but it'll be left in the stream banks to protect against erosion.
Jim, can you define slash? I'm sure there are a lot of people that don't understand.
I have a slide about slash. Slash is basically the tops of trees or branches that come off from trees that have been cut. So it's kind of, you can, you can sort of get the flavor. It snowed on that, on some of the slash there. I've got a picture. I'll talk about that in a minute. All stream crossings are addressed in the forest cutting plan, and they're designed to prevent sediment in the, from entering the stream. And of course, the cutting plans are approved by, by DCR before we can even advertise for them. Here's another opening. I think this was one of the areas that, that the councilors saw also this weekend. This is pretty much still a forest. We didn't do much here, other than to try to clear out some of the canopy around, around the trees that were left here, which basically are some white pines and oaks. I mean, you can see in this photo where there is sunlight reaching, reaching the ground. And again, we've left hemlocks in this particular area, some of them that are, that are in decline. But we recognize that there are benefits to, to leaving some of these hemlock trees there as well. Another picture of thinning. I like this picture. This is one of those ones, if you were walking in the forest, you'd have a hard time figuring out what was done. But this was part of the, part of the work that we did. This post-harvest image is slender oaks and hemlocks that were in a dense grove. Thinning was designed to give more light to the tree crowns by removing completely trees. Most of the trees cut in the project were black birch and hemlock. So that gives you a pretty good idea. So some of the things that we're doing weren't clearing, but more thinning, the result would be something like Here's the slash, picture of slash, which is something that we by design leave on the ground to protect and enhance the soil. The slash basically is, I started to mention, branches, tops, and other parts of the tree that are left behind in the logging operation after the trunk of the tree is taken. During the harvest, we have a lot of slash out there that you've seen. Slash acts as a mat to reduce potential impacts of logging equipment in the soil. Over time, the slash will protect the soil and ultimately decompose and improve it. There's also a lot of habitat value to leaving the slash on the ground like that. So there's a lot of good reasons to leave it. There would be some reasons to take it out, but in the forest, aesthetics aren't really a huge driver for us in this case. This is a photo of a log landing. Obviously, the result of logging activity in the watershed is a pile of wood that gets, gets hauled off in a truck somewhere. For this particular project, local markets were the vast majority of the wood that was, that was removed. A lot of it was firewood. There were some other hardwood logs that went to, went to a mill in Vermont. But the vast majority was, was in New York, or Vermont, or Massachusetts, even in Whaley, some of the firewood stayed. We had a load, we had one load of red pine that went to Canada. We don't actually have a say in where the material goes. It's really up to the, the logging contractor that gets the job to find the markets and market where it goes. In this particular case, a lot of it was local. And the next, the next time we do a cutting project, that may not be the case. We're not, we don't have any control over that part of it. This is a slide that indicates forestry generation. It was a slide that a colleague of mine at, at DCR at Quabon sent to me. And I think it's, it's, it illustrates the difference in, in an area that was cut over, over a six-year period. So on the left, you sort of have this close-up of what the stumps were when they did the logging job. And then at the right, you can see what the opening looks like six years later, and the fact that some of the, the new trees are starting to grow up in the area that was cleared. So a little bit about the science of what we're doing. These, I, I will take credit for this slide, not Mike. I'm the engineer, not the scientist, so. But I think the concepts that are used here are really not too fancy. Forest land is the best land, land use for water quality. So obviously, having forested land and land that hasn't been developed will be the most protective and will provide the cleanest water for the reservoir. A diverse forest is more resilient to change. I think that makes sense. For the, for the long run, it will be more sustainable to have a diverse forest of different age and tree species. Careful silviculture is sustainable. The sun will rise in the morning, and it'll reach the trees and the forest floor, and these trees will grow. If, whether it's mature trees that we've left, and we've opened up their crowns like I started to show, or whether it is in fact sunlight that reaches the forest floor, and some new trees start to grow in those areas that were open. These are fairly basic concepts in terms of managing forest land in a watershed. And in the last, the last quote's not really science, but I think it's, it's illustrative in that forestry is practiced by the vast majority of public water suppliers in New England. So if there's a question about whether we're doing something unique, I know we went through the stormwater utility issue, many, many times, we were asked the question, have other communities done this? What are other communities doing? How are they approaching it? What, what, what does it mean for the city of Northampton? And in this particular case, there are many, many public water suppliers that rely on surface water reservoirs that do forestry. And I have, I have a short list. It's New York City, Boston, Springfield, Pittsfield, Fitchburg, Concord, New Hampshire, Hartford, MDC, New Haven, Connecticut, Providence, Rhode Island, Portland, Maine, Worcester, and there are many, many, many more. The concepts that we use here are, are sound and, and basic and employed by the vast majority of water suppliers. There's been some information that has been circulated to the councilors about, well, it's sort of about the Quabon reservoir. There were some comments in particular that came out of a process that the Quabon went through a couple of years ago. There was a moratorium on forestry practices at the Quabon. They took a break to answer a lot of public questions and concerns about how they were dealing with their forests there. Quabon's much larger than a watershed. Their issues are much more complicated. But the science and some of the, some of the basic concepts that apply are, you know, would be considered universal in my mind. There's a long, public exhaustive record about the science behind watershed and forestry as it applies to Quabon and, and the industry in general. In November of 2012, there was a document called, it was a review of the Massachusetts Division of Water Supply Protection, Watershed Forestry. That was a, a review of how the state manages all its forest land and watersheds. And it was prepared by the Science and Technical Advisory Committee, which was an independent panel of 14 researchers. So it was a very, I felt like it was an extremely thorough process that included a lot of independent scientists and people that were really evaluating what the state's approach was to managing forests and, on state land. There were, there were public comments to that report in early 2013. I just want to point out that Eric Shivian, who's a medical doctor, submitted comments on this, on this report. There were his personal comments. I think they were well thought out. And he had certainly his own, I guess the point I want to make about it is that, they were his personal comments. They were not the comments of Harvard University. That was misidentified in the Gazette article, so I feel it's important just to say that they were his personal comments. They weren't from Harvard University, and they weren't peer-reviewed comments. I think they were probably thoughtful, well-intended comments, and based on research that that particular individual did. But the point is that they came out in, as a result of the Quabon process. The state in turn, they had a stack of public comments that was probably like this. And they in turn reviewed those comments, and then they provided a response to those comments. And all of that science and information is available online. I have the link there. It's really interesting. If you really want to know what happened at Quabon in a lot of these details, I would say, you know, take a weekend and read it all. The, I guess the last thing I want to leave you with is that the Quabon Forestry Program has restarted, and they've got some logging contracts out now. They took a break. There was a moratorium. I think it was for an extended period of time, four or five years, something like that. But they're getting ready to start with their forestry programs again. A little bit about the public process and notices and things. How do people know what we're doing at the Public Works Department? The Board of Public Works at one of their, one of their meetings, adopted the forest stewardship plans. We had Mike Maury, the forester, come in and provide a detailed overview of the contents of the plans. The board reviewed them, and they voted in July of 2012 to adopt the plans as the direction that the watershed should move in. We're, we're doing some outreach efforts as part of these stewardship plans. We've led, to date, two forest walks to discuss the forestry plans that we have, and what the watershed work will entail. We did one pre-harvest in November 9th of this past year, and we just did one on February 15th during the actual logging job. So people could come out, we could tell them what we're doing, and explain what our goals are, and so they can take a look around and see what it looks like. We send out annual consumer confidence reports to all water customers every year. You'll be getting one in your bill soon. We have a little section there, a couple of paragraphs about watershed protection. We've mentioned forestry programs and updates in that, in that consumer confidence report. We do post information on the website and the blog related to, for, for things related to watershed. When we buy land, or we do forestry, or we receive a grant, we try to let people know what we're doing. When the stewardship plans were first approved, Mike, our forester, and Nicole went on the Bill Newman Show just to talk about the stewardship plans, to let people know the board had adopted them and what the, what the goals of those plans were. As we've started to get into implementation, a body notification is a big part of what we do in compliance with the Forest Cutting Practices Act, Mastering Law, Chapter 132. We let people know what we're doing in the watershed. All the logging, we run ads in the Daily Hampshire Gazette and the Greenfield Recorder for, for logging bid ads. And then every contract that's approved related to watershed protection or forestry is reviewed and approved by the Board of Public Works in their public meetings. So it shows up on their agenda, meeting minutes, and all the meetings are videoed and available for inspection. So those are some of the things that, that go on, so that people know what, what we're doing in the watershed. As you probably would imagine, like most things, there's a lot of regulatory oversight in, in terms of the things that we, we do. Department of Environmental Protection, both, they do both watershed inspections, and they also keep a close eye on all things related to the city's water supply. So they're well aware of the things that we're doing. The Department of Conservation and Recreation approves the forest stewardship plans. They, they also approve each cutting plan before we hire a logger to do any work. Compliance with this Forest Cutting Practices Act also kicks in the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, the Watershed Protection Act. We notify the local conservation commissions about the types of things that we're doing. And then lastly, the DCR Green Certification Program also documents the implementation of the programs that we do. And they do field inspections to see how the work gets done. A little bit about program financing. These are all recent numbers. So forestry and related costs up to this point for the main watersheds I talked about, and also Roberts Meadow, $126,000 roughly on, on these related maintenance costs. Department of Conservation and Recreation has given us grants to the tune of about $42,000, which we're quite proud of. The DCR is supportive of the things that we're doing. And the fact that they review the work that we do, and they support it financially, we believe is, is important. To date, we have timber revenue of about $46,000. So the forestry balance to date is in the red, about $37,822. There's a slightly larger number floating around out there in the universe. And there's probably a lot of different ways to calculate it. If you were to take an estimate of the time that Nicole Sanford, our senior environmental scientist, spends on forestry work, and the time that I spend working with Nicole, that adds up to an amount that would increase that deficit. So you can, you can choose to decide how you want to look at the numbers on this. The last bullet that I have there, well, I guess a couple of other things. Long-term value growth of the timber is a goal. So you'll see, it drives the loggers crazy, because the red oak and white pine that we have out there are probably the most valuable trees in terms of value. And those really aren't the trees that we're cutting down. And allowing those trees to grow taller and larger and bigger over time is really an asset for the city. If those trees were ever to be cut down in the future, 20 years, 50 years from now, that's an investment in the value growth of the timber. The program costs are monitored. If people wondering whether we pay attention to this or not, we, we do pay attention to this. Every time the board approves a contract, they ask me if we're making money. So Terry Colain is, is the one that's, has his finger in my chest at most meetings, wondering if we're being physically prudent. So the program costs are monitored. As we've mentioned before, profit is not the primary goal, but profit is important. We're not looting, but by doing forestry types of activities, you're removing forest products, wood products that have a value. Because we're starting on a 10-year plan, the program is $37,000 in the red at this point. But as I mentioned, way, you know, at the very beginning, the city used to use logging projects to fund the timber revenue account to buy land. So just historically, if you looked at what the city has done in the past, it is a program that ran in the black in a pretty significant way, in terms of the ability to take that money and then invest in protecting other land to protect the water supply. And then the last bullet is, the estimate in the stewardship plan, if you were to take a look for it, the total timber value on all the land that the city owns is $2.59 million, of which we have no intention of cutting and cashing that $2.59 million in. But the reason I put the bullet in is to let you know, and let, and let everybody know, that it's a valuable asset for the city of Northampton. We're trying to be quite careful and protective in the way we deal with this asset for the long term, for the, you know, for the next several decades, as, as far as we can plan. And, but our, our goal is not to, to spend money frivolously and do things in the city of Northampton that cost people money. So that's, that's the financing slide. Quick slide. We've had a number of letters and email that various folks have submitted in support of the work that the city's doing, basically stating that sustainable forestry makes sense, and various reasons why people feel that way. Those have been distributed to the councilors so they can see that. And then I'll wrap up with a quick summary. Probably not quick. I don't know how long I've been going on, but I appreciate your patience. The trees are growing. Yes, thank you. And we're happy. I mean, we're happy about the trees. The watershed is managed by a team of staff professionals and science and forestry consultants. Sometimes I feel like I need to say that. Usually, when people find out I work at Public Works, they ask if I filled any potholes today. And what they don't realize is that we have people with master's degrees in engineering, and master's degrees in environmental conservation, and lots of other things that provide the qualifications for us to do a good job for the city. So I'll say that the city staff, we've got city staff professionals, and we hire people that are experts in science and forestry to help us with these important projects. Oversight, really day-to-day, everything that we do is provided by the Board of Public Works, a very caring, interested, hard-working board like yourselves, although their meetings don't typically go this long. Forestry and public watershed land has a long history, as I mentioned, not only in Northampton, but for public water suppliers across New England. Forestry is really a way of life in terms of protecting water quality. Acquiring land and maintaining the forest are really the key components that we use to protect water quality. Watershed and forests are closely regulated by the state, all the different agencies I mentioned. And the public processes and outreach will continue as the forestry program proceeds. I think that this was a, a big surprise for people. There was certainly a lot of interest. It's not often that I come in front of the council to talk about things like this. And I love talking about why Public Works matters, but we feel like the process has been terrific because it's really allowed us to get more information out to people about what we're doing. We're going to continue to hold walks in the watershed so we can explain to people on the types of activities that are planned and what the goals are. So I guess I'll end it there, and if there are any questions- So I guess I'll end it there, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Jim, and Counselor Adams.
Jim, there are, there's another train of thought that, that, that doing nothing is the best approach for, for the forest and for the ecology. And, you know, and in considering that, considering that there are two different schools of thoughts and two different, two different theories, I have to wonder that, there are opposing views on it, but we do know that it's costing the city a substantial amount of money, about $100,000. So while the jury's out on whether it's good for the ecosystem, we, we know it's costing a lot of money. So my concern is that there's no guarantee that we're helping the ecosystem, there's no guarantee based on the fact that there are different thoughts, schools of thought out there, and obviously the city is closing one school of thought. But based on the, the fact that there, there are competing thoughts out there, it's possible that maybe it's not worth the expense.
Well, I think there, there are opposing opinions, and I think the science is sound in terms of how you manage a watershed forest, and I think anecdotally, the fact that just about every water supplier manages their forest in an active way is pretty reasonable anecdotal evidence that there's good, solid science behind it. I think if you look at the Quabon, the Quabon Report that was done and a lot of the work that went through, they went through a very extensive public process with a lot of vetting, with a lot of people that are smarter than me, and the result of that process was that active forestry management in the watershed makes a lot of sense. So I think from that standpoint, I'm not seeing a lot of dissension in terms of whether it makes sense for water suppliers to manage forest. I think that has been clearly shown. I think some people rightfully have their own opinion about whether you should cut trees down on public land. That certainly is a valid, a valid opinion, a valid opinion if someone wants to think that, but I wouldn't say that it's opposing science. And then in terms of the, the price of the program, I mentioned, you know, we're about $37,000 in the red based on contracts. If you want to add my time in there and Nicole's time and ramp it up to 100, or you could add the mayor's time and make that number higher, I think he signed every contract as well. There's a lot, you can play a lot of numbers with the games, a lot of games with the numbers, but...
I took your number.
What's that?
I did take your number.
My number was 37, not 100.
The total was 100. The city is losing money approximately $102,000. That's, that's, it spent $126,000 on forestry consulting and approximately $64,000 on direct and indirect labor costs, offset by, offset by some of the wood sales and the DCR grant.
It's our number if, if you include salary cost. If you look at the contracts that are involved in the, in the implementation of the work, the number's 37 as I presented on the slide. But suffice to say, no matter how the math is done, whether you, whether you include my time or not, whether it's $100,000 or $40,000, in the end, the program will be in the black. And I think we're in year one of a 10-year plan, and we're trying to deal with a lot of different issues in terms of getting the forest stewardship plan up and running, but we've been accused of looting the forest. I wouldn't, I, I would say that there's probably money that will result from the forestry activities. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor LaBarge.
I want to thank you for the presentation. I have emailed our council president and counselor-at-large of the great concerns that quite a bit of my residents have of seeing a figure which went viral, the price of the logging. And I have great concerns, as Counselor Adams has also, is we're hearing two different sides. Is it good to go ahead and do logging in the forestry or not? Or should we be doing it? But when we see we're losing money, I don't like seeing that.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I'll say it again. In the end, the program won't lose money, and it will have proceeds from the work that we do that will go into the timber revenue account that I mentioned, and then that money will be available for just more land as other properties come up for sale. The Board of Public Works is very careful, they monitor all the costs of all the programs, everything that gets done by the Department of Public Works. They're, they're watch the numbers.
It's, it's, I, I, I get a little uncomfortable when we're talking about losing money, investing money, making profits, and so on and so forth, because the principal motivation, this is an investment, if you look at it that way, as opposed to, this is an investment on protecting the watershed, and we spend money that we never realize a return on when we do roads or we do any other infrastructure system and maintenance stuff. We don't get money back for maintaining the levees and dikes. There's no revenue to be generated from that. So, and, and so I think when we start to couch in terms, I mean, you're either arguing one of two things. We're either patsies and we're getting a raw deal on our profit scheme, which if we were doing this as a profit business and enterprise, that would clearly be true. We're, we're getting scammed. But point in fact, actually, I don't know, I'm not speaking for all the councils, but that's not the motivation, and I don't think, and I think, I hope it's not the motivation, and I got, and Jim has expressed as much, that the profit is not the principal objective here, the turning over and making, generate money from this. This is not the impetus for the plan, for as you plan the management. Although that has been accused too. It's been, he was accused both ways, where either, they were accused of trying to generate a profit at the expense of the, the public forest and not succeeding, I guess was the argument, in doing a bad job and losing money at the, in the bargain. And Counselor Adams, well, Counselor Carter.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for guiding the walk last week out in the watershed area. I guess the thing, the biggest piece that I take about from, from most of this, especially around the finance piece, is that we're able to, we're able to use those resources from the, from the timber account to purchase more land, and I just know how many times we've been able to do that through this body to approve the, that, to approve that expenditure and what a benefit, what value that is to expanding the watershed area and protecting that resource for the city. So I'm really, I really value that piece of the work. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
My, my really simple point was that, you know, it wasn't really about whether or not we should be making more off of it or not, or less. My simple point was that, given that there are two different opposing views out there, and my concern was that it's costing the city $100,000, well, that's my concern. But to learn that, you know, eventually we'll be in, in the black, that's important.
Relative to the science, and I think all the councils have gotten a considerable education, they had not anticipated. Actually, good discussion is good and appropriate. The, I'm seeing represented essentially two, as Counselor Adams described, two philosophies on how, on forest management. One is not management and one is. Do nothing. And, and some of the information that I've seen supporting the do-nothing argument is things like carbon sequestration, destroying carbon sequestration over millennia that have been ravaged in the course of time. Every time we remove a tree, we, we actually reintroduce more carbon, either, just in the process of developing it. And I suppose that would make sense if these were actually primitive primordial forests, primeval forests, I'm sorry, that, that, but this is a second, in some cases, third growth forests, depending on how you look at it. The, as you pointed out, the state, the region, the New England was almost 80% denuded at one point for pastoral, pastoral purposes. And so we're talking thousands of years of, of carbon sequestration, we're talking 100 years of, with selective cutting. In, in, and I, I think what I find really compelling is, in fact, actually, there's been an argument that peer-reviewed studies, the, the argument has been advanced, that peer-reviewed studies saying doing nothing is the best course of action while in the absence of any peer-reviewed determination that doing something or maintenance is suggesting that that is what the Department of Public Works has opted for. And I hear you arguing that the science that's been advanced and, and subscribed to by any number of people that you've brought up here, including David Foster, who I believe is cited by the person who's challenging, as, as stating otherwise. That's a leading question, of course, but is that the case? I mean, do, do you consider that there's peer-reviewed science that, that supports these plans?
Yeah, I do. I do. Which is why we're doing it. I think it's become controversial about cutting trees on public property, and the extension of that concern has reached this type of situation where it's watershed land, I, and this concern with cutting trees on watershed land.
Well, it's been framed in any number of ways, actually.
Yeah, that's true. I, I guess, yeah.
Counselor O'Donnell.
When was the, the management plan enacted originally? You said it, what was the year of that?
2012, the recent one.
Okay. Was there one in the 90s you mentioned?
There was one, geez, the city was doing logging in the 80s and 90s, and I don't know if they had a stewardship plan. I think they may have just done individual cutting plans, so they'd look at the forest and decide we're going to work in this area, and this is what we're going to do. Spending the money on these stewardship plans, you look at everything holistically, and, and you look at the whole forest. You look at the timber, you look at the habitat, you look at environmental sensitive areas, and then you look at the interfering vegetation, and you look at all of those different things, and then you try to make decisions in the most informed way that you can. What we're doing by spending more money upfront is resulting in a much more careful implementation plan than what the city used in the 80s, and that, and we, we chose that by design.
Right. So we use this holistic plan as you describe it now. It's not the way we've always done it. It's fair to say that in the future, we may change our plans again, but we don't know. We just do the best we can right now, and we try to keep improving how we take care of our forest, and we are where we are right now, according to our best, I bet the best evidence available to us and our experience in the past and the best research.
Any other questions, points, thoughts? This has been, this has been, I really appreciate it, and I actually, and, and I, I should acknowledge that you brought in some other people for supporting answers, but it's a long night. Rest longer still, but this is, I'm very grateful for this discussion. I don't think the discussion ends now, and as I said, I should point out that it's a long discussion, given the fact that the council has no authority over this in this, in this regard, but it's, it's worth having. So I do, I really appreciate, that was, that was an exhaustive summary. I remember I, I sent you some bullet point questions and you, you answered it and then some.
Could be the last time the council ever asked me to come in front of you.
Oh, you know, any opportunity, look at a PowerPoint, we're there. Thank you very much, Jim. How's everyone doing?
All right. It could be great.
Good to see. The mayor's report. Did you have, no. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
10:36, that's my report.
10:36, got it. Accept the motion, minutes, the minutes, the last meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, I leaped over, sorry. Sorry, that's it. Yes, anyway. Any, any objections?
So we are on minutes right now.
Counselor Murphy made the motion, I think Counselor Adams seconded, right? And it was voted by everybody. Now we're back.
Those are all minutes.
Before us now is the resolution, if you recall, from previous council, a resolution to support hybrid sidewalk, it's been sent back.
Move to waive reading.
With a recommendation, there's most of the...
Or request waive reading.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both.
And move to refer to Social Services and Veterans Affairs.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the referral? Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. I know Counselor Klein from Ward 7 had brought it up in Social Services and Veterans Affairs, that apparently there was going to be a vote on this to submit it into our committee. I agree with that, but I wish it had, this was done when it should have been done. But anyways, what we're planning on doing is having a couple of forms and listen to the public, and then bring the resolution back. We might do some changes.
Any other questions on the referral, discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. So that's been referred to what is now known as SSVCR, the sinking VCR. One-minute announcements, thank you. Counselor Klein.
I just want to remind people again about a meeting on Tuesday about the rail trail extension, excuse me, March 25th, 7 to 9 o'clock in the Leeds School Cafeteria. We're going to have Wayne Fiden, the Director of Planning and Sustainability, come to listen to community input. The biking community has also been invited, and we'd like to see it.
Counselor O'Donnell.
There's going to be a small meeting for constituents, mostly from the North Street section of Ward 3, but open to anyone on Tuesday, March 25th, 5:30 to 7 o'clock, second floor of City Hall, and it's a constituent meeting.
Any others? City Council will be marching in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Hoyoke this Sunday. That's March 23rd, for those checking calendars. There's, on Sunday, also, March 23rd, there's coffee at JJ's Tavern in Florence from 9:30 to 10:15. The bus departs for JJ's, from JJ's at 10:15 a.m. and arrives in Hoyoke at 11:00, and the parade begins at noon. That's when the first contingent steps off. For those of you frozen in the, in the parking lot there in previous years, we're in the middle. So if you want to base your calculations on when you should show off, you could die of exposure out there, but depending on what the weather's going to be like. So, and there also, there'll be a public hearing on Thursday, April 3rd, 2014, at 7:05 here, and that's rayed the capital improvement plan that the mayor's presented, FY 2015 to FY 2019. So that will be a public hearing, and I expect we'll see the mayor answer. Did, did, did you tell her that? Any other one-minute announcements? These are petitions for street acceptance. Acceptance is, excuse me, there's, I don't know if anyone wants to move them as a group.
Move them as a group and refer to the Board of Public Works and Planning Board.
Okay, so the motion is to move 1 through 4 to refer to Planning Board, Board of Public Works. That's, all those in favor of the referral?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, this is a license for secondhand articles. This is wild mutation records on 52 Main Street in Florence, a record store.
So moved.
So moved?
To grant a license.
Approval license?
Yes.
And second?
Can I second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Done the minutes. Next up is the reports from committees. The Committee on EDLU, ordinance, excuse us.
We accept these as a group.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is appointments to, we have, the mayor is submitting a number of appointments. I'm submitting the following names for appointment to the elected official compensation advisory board in accordance with the board's 55. board in accordance with the Board of 55. Each member shall serve a term of two years, starting February 2014, ending February 2016. Names are.
Second.
Okay. I'll read the names. Vicki Baumholmes of Florence, John Fortier of Northampton, Dennis Helmes, also of Northampton, Jennifer Higgins, Northampton, Douglas Lu, Linda Mattson, and Todd Thompson. So, the motion's been made to approve.
It came as a positive recommendation.
They all came from positive recommendations? Okay. Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
I thought you moved it.
I moved it, you seconded it.
Well, I guess I seconded it.
Okay. All right. So, any discussion that come forward from Ward 4?
Yes, positive recommendation.
Exhaustive interviews. Exhaustive. Any discussion on the appointments? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
I'd like to move to take 4, 5, and 6 as a group.
There's been a motion for 4, 5, and 6 to be moved as a group?
Seconded.
And it's been seconded. Any discussion? I should point out, this is the appointment of the Planning Board of William Grinnell. There's also a new appointment to the commission of Margaret Gifford, and a new appointment to the Community Preservation Committee of Linda Morley. Any discussion on the candidates?
Just that this also had positive recommendation from the ordinance committee.
Thank you for noting that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let's see, and this is.
Take 7 and 8 as a group.
7 and 8 have been moved as a group. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And this is reappointments to Central Business Architecture Committee. That was Bruce Grabisky, Alan Tierney, and Robert Walker, and then also reappointments to the Conservation Commission of Tim Partial and Steve Sager.
Move to suspend Rule 30.
There's been a motion to suspend rules for referral and seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll accept a motion for the appointments. Counsel Murphy?
This would be the appointment to the License Commission?
I'm sorry, License Commission. And, not yet, not yet. License Commission comes up next.
Oh, so we need to finalize this.
This is 7 and 8. Counsel Adams moved 7 and 8.
Because they're.
7 and 8, right? Yeah, not yet.
Not yet.
That's 9 will be. So, any discussion on 7 and 8, on those two, the Central Business Architecture Committee and the reappointments of ConsCon?
I'd like to say something.
Yes, please.
I'm sure these are fine candidates, and I will certainly vote yes, but I would like to see us make a concerted effort and do some proactive outreach, so we can see some kind of gender parity in these realms. I think that we're very heavily male representatives in both of those committees, so for the future, I would like to see us try and do some proactive outreach then.
I agree.
That's all.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, this is number 9. This is the appointment of the License Commission. Counsel Murphy?
And I'd like to suspend Rule 30 on this one, too. Elaine Reel is our former city solicitor. I really don't see why we need to send her to be evaluated by the ordinance committee. I think she's quite qualified to serve on the License Commission, so I'd like to.
Let's suspend that, Rule 30.
Motion made and seconded to suspend. Vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The, by the way, this is appointment of License Commission Elaine Reel to replace the expiring term of Stephanie Levin. So, move appointment.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I just, it's unfortunate we don't get to hear why she's interested in all of those other things. That's why, that's why I voted no before, but I'm not voting against their appointment.
Any further discussion on that point, on the candidate? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now comes the time, believe it or not. Well, actually, I would ask the council to consider extending beyond our regular time at this point, before we recess into finance.
Move to extend past 11 o'clock, whatever rule that is.
What is it, 27?
I don't know. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Change your mind.
Any opposed? Okay.
Passionate.
All right. Caught me up short. We're now recessing into finance, and I, we will pass the gavel to Counsel Murphy, who chairs the finance. Mary's going to read the rule, and then we'll, and then she'll give you the.
Counsel Murphy?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Now, I can.
So, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz, that $98,000 would be appropriated from the FY 14 general fund, undesignated fund balance, to the legal services M.O. account, and the mayor is here to explain it.
So, this is one of those accounts that we, they'll come back to you throughout the fiscal year. In fiscal year 13, last fiscal year, we spent $289,078 in our legal account. With this, we are projecting that for fiscal year 14, we'll spend under that at $273,000 is our current estimate to get to the end of the fiscal year. So, this transfer of $98,000 would bring the total appropriation for legal services to 273, which we are estimating, you know, based on, you know, looking at the first months of the fiscal year, that that's where we will end up. So, this will help us to be able to finish out the fiscal year.
So, before questions, can somebody move this?
So moved.
Okay, great. So, Counsel LeBarge?
Yes. Mayor, I want to thank Susan for giving me the information that I requested, and because it's on the website, and residents saw this stating of a legal service for M.O., thinking that it was one attorney. Can you explain how many attorneys this is actually composed of?
Yeah, so we have, you know, we have the city solicitor, obviously, who provides our primary legal counsel, but then we also have, we have attorneys for collective bargaining. So, we have attorneys that help us with labor costs. We also have several, you know, we have a special counsel, for example, that we hired to advise on the bid certification and petition process. We have an environmental attorney who is advising us on some 21E issues with EEP, so we hire outside counsel for that. We obviously hired specialized counsel for the casino gaming issue. So, we have, and interestingly, we even, I think we even have one attorney that we hire to adjudicate our dog hearings. So, we have other outside counsel, but that, so when you talk about the legal service budget, it's, the city solicitor manages it, but it's not all for just the city solicitor services. And again, this budget, we are projecting that it's going to come in less than last year's legal service budget, and this transfer would put us there.
Thank you.
And we'd have a pretty good estimate, because essentially, this is just through June 30.
Exactly.
Finishing off, so we're close enough to the end.
Yes.
Obviously, we know what's coming up.
No, we hope this is a good estimate, and that we won't have to come back to you again for it, but, so we're doing the best we can, and so this is where we are.
Any other questions in finance?
No, but I think we're looking at two readings when it comes to.
All right. So, if there's no other questions, all in favor of a positive recommendation?
Aye.
Aye. But any opposed? And one other.
Upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, order that the sum of $300,000 hereby is transferred from Parking Receipt Reserve for Appropriations to the General Fund for Replacement of the Parking Access and Revenue System in the EJGar parking garage. We have a motion on this one?
So moved.
Okay. And the mayor will explain this one to us.
I was going to don my yellow jacket and my $5 bucket for this part of the evening, but actually Attorney Winston, in his public comments earlier, I think, made some salient points. This is, of course, a transfer, and Mr. Pomerantz is here, and I can let him talk to you about the specifics of it, but this is an item that's been on our capital plan for several years, and it's actually part of my capital program as well. But this is to replace the failing system in the EJGar parking garage. When we began experiencing the problem with the breakdown of the components, the inability to get components from the distributor, and then the manufacturer, and just the increased maintenance on it, we began looking at a more modern and more robust system, including a system that had more modern features like credit card, and did not rely on the very specialized technology of these cards, which were very expensive when people lost them. So, we went out to bid. We put together some bid specs, went out to bid, and the bids, I believe the bids just closed this week. We would like to move this project forward and ask for the ability to transfer funds from the Parking Receipt Reserve for Appropriation account to get this project moving, as opposed to waiting until the, going through the normal capital budget process, which would mean we wouldn't be able to, wouldn't even be able to sign a contract until June 30th, or whenever the, you know, July 1, when the budget went into effect. We really feel this is a high priority issue. You know, we had the one malfunction that resulted in the, you know, the need to create an alternative system for collecting fees, and then more recently, we've had the issue of the card shortage. We just received another shipment of them from Germany. They were late, but it's been creating havoc, and just the machines themselves have become temperamental in terms, and needing a lot of maintenance. So, we really want to get the system replaced. So, I was, would ask Mr. Pomerantz to speak to it quickly about the actual system components, but that's what this order is about.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. As the mayor said, we did go out to bid for a new system. We opened the bids yesterday. We'll be looking at doing a scoping review starting tomorrow, meeting with the contractor and the sort of assumed vendor at this point, to go over their proposal and their plan and documents, to see if it meets what the spec stated that was put out for bid. If it doesn't, we have some other vendors we can look at. Any of the vendors are going to tell us it's about 12 weeks from start to finish, once the contract is signed, to get the project completed. So, that's another reason why we want to move on this immediately, because the components have to be basically manufactured, the system is put together, and the construction schedule set, to get things installed in the garage and get the old system removed. We were estimating about $300,000, as the order is looking. The initial bid we got yesterday was $250,000. So, we've got some very good numbers, and we'd like to proceed as soon as we can to get things rolling.
I don't understand entirely what this whole system is composed of. So, you have, you have the, I heard a reference to the, at the entrance of the garage where there was that malfunctioning. It encompasses that part of it, but what else? Just all, everywhere where you pay?
The whole thing is a system. So, the change dispensers, where you put your card in to get it read, all that, it's all tied into the same system. The gate has readers that then signals that keep account of who's in the garage, how many cars are in the garage.
But aside from, so you have the, the one in the entrance, you have one of the areas where you pay.
All of the pay and display machines.
All the pay and display.
And display machines, do we?
We have three.
Three.
Three of those, and those are, that's all part of the system. What else? Is the, is the section of the garage that's only for passholders, is that part of the system?
The permit system is also tied into the same system, yes.
Is there anything else, or is that the whole system?
The gate has a, there has to be a, what do you call that, that's installed in the pavement?
The loop system.
It's a loop system, a detector system, so that when cars pass over it, that gets installed, and then the gate arms themselves, all of that. And we're looking at a system that dispenses the paper cards, the paper cards that are more common in garages, and so if someone loses that, it's not a $25 item that we have to order from Germany to replace it. So, the paper cards, the technology's come a long way. We met with several of the vendors. I mean, you can crumple them up in your pocket, and they still work.
At least have receipts?
What's that? Yeah, you'll have that ability. You'll have credit card, credit card ability, which we think is going to be great.
Absolutely.
Because we often have, you know, one of the biggest issues is the change machines getting all fouled up, people waiting in line to just get change, or because, you know, a lot of people just want to swipe and go. It's what most cities have now. So, that's going to be a great feature. Plus, we have the ability to tie into, you know, to be able to get, tie into our system so we can monitor it remotely, which is the other feature of the new modern garage systems. So, I mean, I think ours was cutting edge at the time, but it's, the technology has changed so rapidly. So, we just feel that this is, given the problems we've been having in the garage, and you heard the concerns about the leaseholders, and that was a result of the card shortage and the garage filling up, but also, the winter storms also meant a lot more people parking in the garage, but we hope to eliminate those kinds of issues, as well as find a company that has a good maintenance, you know, component, that there's maintenance that comes along with it, so.
Counsel O'Donnell.
The sort of vision to put in credit card capability for other municipal lots, that's entirely separate.
It's actually in our capital improvement program. There's another, there's actually a project in our capital improvement program to replace all the, what do you call?
Their modules.
The modules on the pay and display machines, to have those also have credit card.
This, you just want to get done quicker.
Want to get it done because of the problems, but it's in the capital plan.
Right.
I think it's a $70,000 item, and basically, we'll go out to all of those pay and display machines that you see right now. You pull the guts of it out, and you put a new one in, and it has a credit card capability.
I think that's great.
Exactly. No, we, again, we think that's a, for convenience, it's also easier for, you know, having to collect the funds, so we just think it's a, it's a great way to move, so.
Counsel Klein, do you have a question?
I don't want to cry over spilled milk here, but I'm just curious, did we get the life that we expected out of the mechanisms that we've been using? I mean, when were they purchased, and what was the projected lifespan?
As far as I can tell from the, what's in the files, that system was put in in 2005. So, not a long period of time.
Did it have some kind of projected lifespan? Have we lost money on that system?
I don't know if we've lost money, but basically, between the headaches and having to get replacement parts, not as useful as it could have been.
I'm losing hair, because I'm like, you know, we like, can't get these people to answer the phone, and, you know, it's a, I mean, at the time, this was, you know, when we got the system, we were going to be the first municipality in North America that had the system. And, you know, when we've had these problems, we've been calling around, trying to figure out, is there anyone else who has the system, and there isn't anyone else that we can find that actually has the system. So, I think we were an early adopter, and I'm not sure that it caught on. As we've talked to the manufacturer, or, and so, you know, that, it's actually a system that's probably better suited for like a hospital, or a large firm, where you've got the same pool of people that are coming in every day because of the card thing, and so, you know, as opposed to people who are coming from Connecticut, and Boston, and whatever, and they drive away with the card, don't think about it. So, anyway, that, because we even looked into, when we had the recent card shortage, can we just call somebody else who has this garage and borrow some cards? The closest place was like a hospital in.
Down in Connecticut someplace.
In Connecticut, but the cards are not interchangeable. You can't borrow cards from somebody else. So, you know, the system we bought may have been a good system, or seemed like a good system at the time. I don't know what the life expectancy of it is, but at this point, it's, you know, it costs us money every time it's down, and we have, you know, folks that can't find a place to park, and so I really believe we have to just move forward and get it replaced.
Is it a moot point, too, to ask for some kind of compensation?
Oh, we've looked into, well, we've looked into more than just compensation. I've had the city solicitor review whether we have any legal recourse, given the delays we've had, and the, but we really don't. I mean, we bought the system, it's, if there was any warranty, we're well out of it at this point. So, no, I have, I believe me, I've looked into that, just given the frustrations we've had.
But, I mean, being a technology-based device, getting 10 years out of that before it goes obsolete is above the par. And it's got a mechanical component, and it's outside in the weather to boot, so.
Right.
It would seem to me that it's about live, that's effective life, and then functionality-wise... It would seem to me that it's about live, that's effective life, and then functionality-wise, it doesn't take credit or debit cards.
Yes.
Counsel Stuckey?
So, functionality-wise, it's worn out, technologically-wise, mechanically, it's worn out, and it's causing
Yes.
Counsel O'Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
its problems, and we'll be spending designated parking money on a real parking problem.
Yes.
Counsel Boy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
So, it seems to make sense.
Next up is the financial order, the transfer of $300,000 to Parking Receipts Reserve
The gate's been taken off about 1,000 times.
Run over. And the other thing is, with 12 weeks, I mean, if we get rolling on this, it'll be
for Appropriation, the general fund for replacement of parking access and revenue system at EJ Gar parking garage.
in place for the return of the students and foliage season and all that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, we're hoping to time it so that we can have the least disruption during a
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, any further discussion on this?
period, you know, and have it in place for when things pick up again in the, in the fall,
I'd just like to say that I'm actually very much in favor of this, and I think it's
so.
Any other questions?
more important that it's a point of service for the community, and that's where it's
No.
Okay, then in finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation?
Aye.
really failed.
You need to sign this.
It's been, yeah, it's been really frustrating for people to deal with and navigate, and
Then, those are the only two items in finance, so a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
creates subsequent headaches with all the other, with the park, all the people in charge
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks for standing. who have to deal with the issues that come up there. Beam back in to our regular meeting, and while it's still fresh in your memory, is And I think, hopefully, anything we can do to make it easier for people to come to the community and enjoy the community, it's all for the good. your synapses are starting to fade. Counselor Adams has already made a motion on the appropriation of $98,000 from the All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, fooled you. general fund, undesignated fund balance for Legal Services OM account. Roll call.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Second.
Counsel O'Donnell?
And the word second.
Yes.
Counsel Scherer?
Made, and seconded here.
Yes.
Counsel Stuckey?
Yes.
Counsel O'Carney?
Yes.
Any, any further discussion on this?
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Next up, there's a two sheets, please sign two sheets. Roll call, please, Mary.
Why?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
This is second reading for the authorization of acquisition of easement, fully trust, 50
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
This is the motion made and seconded to suspend rules for second reading. to 3 by gift, purchase, or other.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Any further discussion on this issue?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Counsel Roy?
Any abstentions?
Yes.
Except a motion for the second reading?
Counsel Stuckey?
Yes.
Move to approve. Counsel O'Donnell?
Seconded, made, seconded.
Yes.
Counsel Scherer?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge? Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Next up is the financial order, the transfer of $300,000 to Parking Receipts Reserve for
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Scherer?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Appropriation, the general fund for replacement of parking access and revenue system at EJ
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Gar parking garage. Next up is the financial order, the transfer of $300,000 to Parking Receipts Reserve for
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Appropriation, the general fund for replacement of parking access and revenue system at EJ Any discussion, any further discussion on this?
No.
I'd just like to say that I'm actually very much in favor of this, and I think Gar parking garage.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. it's more important that it's a point of service for the community, and that's where Any discussion, any further discussion on this?
No.
it's really failed. I'd just like to say that I'm actually very much in favor of this, and I think It's been, yeah, it's been really frustrating for people to deal with and navigate, and it's more important that it's a point of service for the community, and that's where creates subsequent headaches with all the other, with the park, all the people in charge it's really failed. who have to deal with the issues that come up there. It's been, yeah, it's been really frustrating for people to deal with and navigate, and And I think, hopefully, anything we can do to make it easier for people to come to creates subsequent headaches with all the other, with the park, all the people in charge the community and enjoy the community, it's all for the good. who have to deal with the issues that come up there. All those in favor, please say aye. And I think, hopefully, anything we can do to make it easier for people to come to
Aye.
No, fooled you. Roll call. the community and enjoy the community, it's all for the good.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Counsel Scherer? Aye.
Yes.
No, fooled you.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Roll call.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Scherer?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
This is the second reading for the authorization to Conservation Commission to purchase or otherwise acquire land at Broadbrook Gap.
Move to approve. Second.
Wave second reading.
Okay, and there's requests to wave the second reading.
Yes.
And everyone seems to be in accord with that. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please, Mary.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Scherer?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
This is the second reading for the authorization to Conservation Commission to purchase or otherwise acquire land at Broadbrook Gap.
Move to approve. Second.
Wave second reading.
Okay, and there's requests to wave the second reading.
Yes.
And everyone seems to be in accord with that. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please, Mary.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Scherer?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Scherer?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Roy?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
The city paying the fee is still us paying the fee. And I just think it made people who were, oh, the city should pay its fair share. And I just, so, I just want that understood because it was said as if I was the one backing that, and I was not.
Counselor Murphy, then Counselor Adams, then Counselor Carney.
As to the city paying that fee, I believe when all is said and done, the city's contribution by paying the fee to the stormwater fund will be considerably less than what we're now spending out of the general fund budget on stormwater because there is no other source of money for stormwater. So it actually results in a reduction of general fund support because the fee's going to be lower than the money that's now being spent for that. The other thing I wanted to point out is, there was some talk about, you know, when did the solicitor get involved in this and discover that perhaps the way we worded that cap would not get by the Department of Revenue. The ordinance committee didn't deal with it until February 25th or something like that.
That's not, that's not true.
At what I thought was a very well-attended meeting where the public had one more round at it, made a lot of comments. So, it wasn't, all of the components in the amendments weren't homogenized into one ordinance until the 25th, at which point then the solicitor looked at it and said, "Oh, I got a problem with this one." And the first reading came up like a week later, a little over a week later. So, there wasn't a lot of time in between the ordinance actually being finished and when the solicitor looked at it and then it came to us the last time. So, not a lot of, not a lot of time in between finishing the ordinance after that last, last public meeting and when it came to council. The other thing that I wanted to mention about the cap, we're a living cap for this. I mean, the cap may not be on the mayor putting his budget together, but not only do we approve that enterprise fund, but we also improve the entire budget. So if this body says it's $2 million, it's going to be $2 million, no matter what the mayor decides he wants to spend. And if we decide that a hurricane comes through and takes out a chunk of the dike and the money to fix that has to come from somewhere because the dike is decertified because of the damage, well, then we go there. But as long as we have the resolve to say it's $2 million, that's all it's ever going to be. The cap maybe made people feel better, but we're the ones that say, "Two million, no more," and as long as we do that, then there is a cap.
Counselor Adams, then Counselor Carney.
My few points, just addressing some of the things we heard from public comment. There was no conspiracy to give the chamber an inordinate amount of say in this process. And also, there was a suggestion that Counselor Specter somehow orchestrated that. Counselor Specter, myself, and Counselor Dwight sort of created the outline for the process. And when we created the idea of the task force, the idea was that different members of the council and different other entities would appoint members to the task force. And I don't think anyone got together to decide that they should have, you know, a certain number of chamber members on it. I just don't agree with that. One gentleman in the public comment said that the city will pay nothing under this ordinance. He kept saying that. He's completely incorrect. He must not have been following this. But also, I just want to point out, I think Counselor Specter did. It's still not to change this, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of opposition on the council to the mandate to the city paying. It's still not too late to do that. I have an amendment that I'm presenting tonight. It's just not too late to do that. I do want to talk about the cap process. I drafted the cap amendment. I disagree that it was minor. I think it was extremely important, and I think a lot of people would agree with me on that. I did it last fall. I presented it to numerous committees, and it was in all the presentations given to the public. And also, Counselor Murphy, frankly, it's incorrect that the solicitor got it in February. I presented it when I was still in ordinance. I presented it back then, and the solicitor was absent at that meeting as well. So, I mean, this first made its way to ordinance back last term when I was still on the committee, so that's just not the case. Rule 36 was not followed. And I was, I was extremely disappointed to wake up the day of the ordinance, the first vote, and find out that it was illegal. I mean, I drafted that thing last fall, and I first presented it to ordinance last term. So, I mean, it happened. But I do want to point out, it doesn't nullify any votes taken. It doesn't make the ordinance illegal. And I think there's a distinction here. The council process was, I do think, exemplary. I think that we did outreach that we, that probably hasn't been seen before in any issue in recent memory. If there was a process, if there was a problem with the process, and it was, it was that it's the solicitor's failure to follow Rule 36. And I hope we address that. That's a different branch. That's the executive branch. So, for those people critical of the process, they should focus that criticism where it's rightly deserved. But just my final thoughts are, you know, this, the fee is needed, and I appreciate the process concerns. We've done nothing illegal, and, you know, using the process as a way to thwart the final outcome is not a solution, as Mr. Lapianski stated. The only other thing to do was nothing, and that's certainly not a solution. So, those are my final thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Carney, and then Counselor LeBarre.
My comments really are related to the exemption piece as well, and we heard, all throughout this process, everyone pays. Everyone pays, and that's everyone. And that was the justification for why, why the city should pay. And while I'm not prepared to offer an amendment to strike that language, and mostly because this was something that did go through all of the neighborhood meetings and of the, you know, the chambers, subcommittee, and everyone else, and did come back, it has always, it, you know, throughout the process seemed somewhat confusing to have that language that said that the city should pay as an example of how everyone, because everyone pays. Because in fact, yes, everyone pays, but some people pay twice. And that's what this is, and that's what happens in this case. When we say that the city pays, or the city property is also assessed, homeowners pay on their own homes, on their own property, business owners as well, on their property, and then they pay again by virtue of the taxes that they pay to the general fund. So I found that it was really important to clarify that, and that's why I offered that amendment at the last meeting, just to really distinguish, to really make it clear that when we say the city, we're saying the taxpayers. And that's the only comment I wanted to make tonight.
Counselor LeBarre.
Yes. I just want to echo what Counselor Adams had just stated. I also attended that ordinance committee meeting, and I have to say, Jesse, Counselor Adams, his amendment was placed in the fall, came into ordinance that night, and no city solicitor there, and I'm concerned about this. I'm really concerned about that Rule 36. It bothers me. And I am hoping next time, whenever we have anything coming in that is of a lot of value, especially money coming out of people's pockets, I have great concerns. I really feel, as city councilors, it is our job. Two readings is two readings. I agree with you, Counselor Specter, but we could have had a meeting in between just to educate the taxpayers. I don't find that to be a problem. I think the process was excellent through the Board of Public Works. I think there was a tremendous amount of communication, but I can't tell you, as a city councillor, on my word, how many calls I have gotten within the past two weeks of people who were really supporting this because of that five-year cap, and then all of a sudden, things have changed. Just that one meeting would have meant a lot to a lot of people of trust, of trust. And I'm hoping that we really look at this because people are not happy in this city. I'm going to support this, but I am really questioning this Rule 36 and the procedure on how it was done.
Counselor Specter.
Changing the topic, I have a, is hopefully a friendly amendment.
Okay.
To add. And can I read the amendment?
Please.
Okay. "The Department of Public Works shall be strongly encouraged to bear witness to the needs of bicyclists, pedestrians, and people using mobility devices, and shall be further encouraged to consider their needs on an equitable basis in conjunction with the needs of motorists, business owners, and others, both during the construction of any projects funded in whole or in part by the Stormwater and Flood Control Utility in regard to the design of the finished product." And I want to thank Counselor Adams for suggesting, good lawyer, to suggest where this would go. This would be under 280-8E. So it's just a way of encouraging, as you say, the language there is just saying, "We strongly encourage that those things be taken into account when looking at funding projects."
Do you have the language?
I do.
Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Discuss the amendment?
Just a question. Can you give me an example of how bicycles and pedestrians would be affected by the stormwater system?
Well, if you're redesigning a sidewalk, for example, because of the stormwater, you want to make sure that you use some of those funds and say, "We're going to..."
During construction?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you just take it into account that even during construction, you take into account there are people coming by.
I would imagine that the purposes amendment is just sort of emphasizes, not the presumption that they normally ignore.
Not at all. It's just saying, "Take it into account. You don't ignore it."
Right. That it's probably maybe even part of the policy that exists already, but you just want to clarify.
I assume it is, but I was, I was asked to introduce that, and I thought it was a friendly.
Counselor Specter, are you saying this goes after the sentence that I already bears?
Two, it says, it says where it is at the bottom, 280-8E.
The federal projects for stormwater management and flood control, you know, all of this after that?
Yes.
As Article E?
Article E.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Counselor Adams?
I'm sorry, not that amendment, no.
Sounds good.
All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Not for the amendment, I think.
No, we're letting Mary catch up here.
Oh.
I do want a roll call on that, yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarre?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
I have an amendment. This will be my final one, I think.
When you read your amendment, would you change it to July 1, 2015, or 14? When is this, it's fiscal year '15.
Well, the...
But it's July 14, so you're correct. Sorry about that. I kept, was just thinking the next fiscal year.
Right, 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 I get it. The, we amended the credit section last time, and it was a little, at reading it, the way we amended it, I just thought it was a little bit confusing. I thought sort of, basically, it said, "DPW is going to come with the credit system. Council can change them. The mayor can change them." Just, I thought there needed to be a little more clear, and actually, I worked on this with the city solicitor to come with this language, which I think makes it very clear how it'll work. "The Board of Public Works shall develop a proposed Stormwater Management and Flood Control Utility Credit Policy," credit policy, "by July 1, 2014. The Board shall submit the proposed credit policy to the mayor, who may approve, modify, and approve or disapprove the credit policy. The credit policy, as approved by the mayor, shall be submitted by the mayor to the city council for approval. The city council may approve or disapprove the credit policy as submitted." So it's just a very, I mean, it just clarifies it, just...
How far it's going?
So, the amendment most...
Sorry, that'll be 280-10. It'll be, delete the first sentence, and replace that sentence with these three sentences. And then the rest of my amendment is delete Section F entirely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Murphy.
Oh, just a question. We're assuming this, this is for the initial implementation that this timeframe is set up for, to get it ready for when it starts. How about amending the policy? Is that dealt with, do you recall, elsewhere in the, you know, if, let's say, you know, three years in, DPW chooses to amend the policy, does this require the same procedure?
Yes, that's my...
So this simply says it'll be done for July 1, right out of, starting off?
Right.
And after that, it could be amended through the same process?
Yeah, I believe, yeah. Yeah, it doesn't state, I see what you're saying. It doesn't state expressly if this is supposed to happen at future points. I mean, it's my intent that it does, but...
I mean, I can understand for the public, when the bills start going out, we want the credit policy defined so that if people want to use it right away, they can. But down the road, if they want to change it, you know, every couple of years, depending on experience, or if they find there's a flaw in it or something, I assume it would be the same procedure.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Here, I could, I could address that, I think. This language, sorry, if I could just, "shall be developed and from time to time amended." Shall be, shall, shall develop, propose, and from time to time amend. That takes the language from the original one.
What about amend is needed?
Yes, needed. I think it's from the needed.
Counselor O'Donnell to the amendment?
Would you consider, as a friendly change, saying the Board shall annually submit the proposed credit policy to the mayor? In other words, as part of the annual budget process? That way, in addition to what you have just added to your amendment, just annually?
Yeah, no, yes. That would, where specifically would you put it?
I guess I would put the word, and I don't know if we want to deal with your amendment first. We put the word annually, after the word shall. The Board shall annually submit.
Can I cover that, what? Thank you, Counselor.
That's a friendly amendment, addition to the amendment. Can someone read the full amendment as it, as everyone now understands it?
"The Board of Public Works shall annually develop a proposed Stormwater Management and Flood Control Utility Credit Policy by July 1, 2014. The Board shall submit the proposed credit policy to the mayor, who may approve, modify, and approve or disapprove the credit policy. The credit policy, as approved by the mayor, shall be submitted by the mayor to the city council for approval. The city council may approve or disapprove the credit policy as submitted."
You don't need the July. I think if it's annually at this point, you don't need that, that date certain at this...
So that was 2014?
Yeah, anymore.
Right, the 2014.
Okay.
So delete by July 1st?
Delete to 2014, by July.
By 2014, good point. Counselor O'Donnell?
But is that accurate? Is July 1st when this proposal should be developed? That's when the...
Start of each new fiscal year, so...
But isn't it the case that that's when it must be approved by? So the development might happen before. So it might be cleaner just to remove the month.
So just get rid of the date certain?
Because Andy, he does it.
Yeah, just get rid of the date certain and just have annually until...
Yeah, how about just period after credit policy, by July 1, 2014, deleted?
So the concept would be annually, when DPW submits its proposed budget, part of that is either the same credit policy that they've been using, or a new version of it based on their experience, but the budget and the credit policy would come to us together, and we'd approve it every year, you know, at the same time.
Counselor O'Donnell?
But just as a bookend, I mean, the mayor's the one who submits the budget, so I would defer to what you think would be appropriate.
Well, it's due to you by usually May 15 to be, I mean, it's due to you 45 days prior to the start of the fiscal year. But if I needed a little bit of time to review it, maybe it would be, I mean...
So it's okay just to remove the month?
I think it'd be fine. I mean, I think, I think it'll be expected that it'll come as part of the, part of the enterprise fund budget.
I have a question about the amendment. So you're suggesting that the mayor will modify or amend, and it will be given to the city council for final approval, but it doesn't say anything about modification there? Does the council not have the power to modify as well?
We should have.
Well, in the same way, I think in the same way that, you know, the cap was, it's in the...
The issue is...
It's in the... What I'm saying is in terms of language, it says specifically that the mayor can modify, but it doesn't say that the city council can.
That's correct. I think it's intentionally that way.
That's correct.
It's, we can say yes or no, and then...
The issue is, of course, the same that they point out that came up before, is that we do not have the authority to limit the mayor's budgetary process. And when we put on caps, or when we put on restrictions of any sort, we have the right to vote it up or down once it comes to it. But we can't modify and change those things, although we can certainly have influence. Again, once again, no authority, but influence. So, and that's an important distinction, and I think coming out of, you know, as I said, we, we did charter reform for several years, and we came out, out of that process and all a little wiser, and then some of us still a little stupefied, and I will be one of those people in the world, still trying to comfortably adjust and accommodate that, which is, actually also speaks to the, the issue about the cap. Any more discussion on the amendment?
Could someone read the amendment as it is now?
The Board of Public Works shall annually develop a proposed Stormwater Management and Flood Control Utility Credit Policy by July 1, 2014. The Board shall submit the proposed credit policy to the mayor, and the mayor approve, modify, and approve or disapprove the credit policy. The credit policy, as approved by the mayor, shall be submitted by the mayor to the city council for approval. The city council may approve or disapprove the credit policy as submitted, and also delete Section F.
So my understanding, though, was that we added from time to time...
No, I think you're, I think you're, I think, would you add, would you, would you did...
Annual, it's annual, it's fine.
Mandated that they'll do it yearly, I think.
Must be really annoying, the annually belongs next to the first shall, or should, is it better? Is it better to say the Board shall annually submit? You'd rather say the Board shall annually develop, rather than say the Board shall annually submit the proposed? Just a question, I, it's probably too...
The submission charge is in the second sentence, of course. And I should say, in the context, this is the, the plan, as we heard from, as Jim testified last time, is to do on an ongoing basis, make adjustments and accommodations, and rather than prescribe something even more finite. My guess is by the time they will be working on this process, and then, but it will be subject to approval by the mayor, but they're already charged, and it's, it's their intent to do just that anyway, what we're trying to torturously try to direct them to do. Any more discussion on the amendment? Preferably to be a roll call? A roll call on the amendment, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
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 All right, we're back to the main order. Any further discussion on that, please? And it is late, 11:30, we're approaching another day. The, I do think it's important, and everyone has said, and, and I think, you know, the process and the trust have been called into question, and I think it's worth addressing. And I think it comes from sort of a misunderstanding about process. Well, we've just done, we've just done a series of amendments, and we did a series of amendments at the last meeting as well, which is actually what this deliberate body is charged with doing. And the, as far as the explanation to the community, I think Counselor Specter spoke to this quite appropriately. It's why we have two votes. It's why we have these separated by these meetings, an opportunity for councilors to speak with their constituents, do research and find out essentially what the issue is, and then in turn respond to the community as they, as the questions come up. The, the issue about, well, bait and switch, as one's asserted here, we're actually, we have to, we take it, uphold the law and the constitution of the state, and point of fact, we were, it was pointed out, albeit late, but it was still pointed out, and as Counselor Carney pointed out, in time. Not optimal time, but in time, for us to abide by the law and not make essentially an illegal document that would have eradicated the validity of this document. That's our job. That's what we're supposed to do. That's exactly what we're supposed to do. And at the same time, it is understood that you can't post anticipated amendments. Amendments sometimes come on the floor at the last minute. That is, and the purpose of that is, I mean, we're charged with trying to make the best document possible. And I think it's incumbent upon us, and even going forward as we go, is to, is to continue to outreach. It doesn't end today with a yeet of a vote. We have to continually go out, and at the same time, we have to be, understand what it is we're doing, and what it is we have done, and be prepared to defend or explain, or even apologize for what we've done. The fact is, is that with a full breadth of knowledge and understanding that a lot of us have come to accumulate over this, over this discussion, and I, and I too took issue with any number of public comments, because for a variety of reasons, I don't think that they were necessarily based, they were based on perception as opposed to based on fact. So, I once again want to thank the council the way they've conducted themselves. I think you've done it more than honorably. I think you've done exactly what it is we were expected to do. And I'm really actually quite proud of this. The fact is, I don't agree with a number of things about this. I just, as I said before with the bid debate, there's a whole, the whole structure, the superstructure that is given to us by the state and federal authorities, I got issues with. But the fact is, given the constraints that we work under and the challenges that we face, this, we did our due diligence, we did our good faith outreach, we continued to do that, and if we have indeed lost the trust, then, then we've got some work to do. But I hope that, I hope that everyone understands that, I mean, I think that no one gamed this. No one played us. There may be some people who feel they have, but we should be proud of them. And so I thank you as we go into this. I have waived, of course, consideration of everyone on the planet Earth, the reading of the entire ordinance this time. I did read it in toto the last time. The amendments have been read. The, the document is available online so that the public can review it and see, and it will be posted with the new amendments.
Last year.
And will, it's available for the public to see. And in fact, Counselor O'Donnell, amendment that requires a regular report on, on the internet, on the website as well, in the interest of transparency. So, that said, anyone else have any other comments or thoughts on this article, on this ordinance establishing this enterprise? I'll please Mary. Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarre?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sharon?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sharon?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Just a second.
What's it to ya? Piker, you're leaving. Just to extend, Mary, stay with us. I'm going to leave this whole thing.
Oh, stop.
Wave reading, please.
Oh, it's been a request to wave reading, but this is again on the recommendation of Counselor Adams. It's about the council rules about relative to remote meeting participation. You'll recall a discussion on that. This essentially allows us to... Questions? Who seconded that?
I did.
That is Counselor LeBarge. All those in favor, please say aye. Don't have a hard roll call. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Suspend Rule 14.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to suspend rules. For all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Extentions? Motion for second reading?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mary?
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. What's it to ya? Piker, you're leaving. Just to extend, Mary, stay with us.
Oh, stop.
Wave reading, please.
It's been a request to wave reading, but this is again on the recommendation of Counselor Adams. It's about the council rules about relative remote meeting participation. You'll recall a discussion on that.
Yep.
This essentially allows us to take advantage of the authorized use of remote participation in meetings under special circumstances. I'll accept the motion to put it on the floor. So moved?
Seconded.
Motion made by Counselor Murphy, seconded by Counselor Klein. Any further discussion?
Yes.
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 Suspend Rule 14.
Motion to suspend the rules?
I'll make that.
What?
I'll move, we suspend Rule 14.
She just, so we'll call you.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yeah?
The discussion is something, we're going to approve this, but when is the focus technology going to be in place for like a monitor to be here to represent us? Because we obviously can't do this until we can do this.
Well, the rule, the rules are specific and stipulate to a certain extent. So the public can actually hear the person. I mean, theoretically, we could do it with my laptop, turn it to the audience, and it can be done as long as it's amplified. And we could do it with Skype.
Does it have to be visual? I mean, I thought...
It doesn't have to be visual. It also can also be by phone.
iPhone.
iPhone's not going to count unless you put on the microphone.
That's what I mean, you know, like this.
We don't have the budget for that G-Wood stuff yet. This is just fish on the prospect. Not exclusive to the council meetings, subcommittee meetings as well.
But I mean, it doesn't need to be discussed extensively tonight. Somewhere we have to decide when we're at the speed for it.
Yes, yeah. And I anticipate that the rules will change as the technology changes.
Next.
Any further discussion? We haven't voted, Paul. Counselor Adams made the motion, or Counsel LeBarge made the motion originally, and then seconded by Counsel Murphy. That was to suspend rules, right. And all those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are motions. Counselor...
Second reading.
Seconded by Counselor Specter.
Yes.
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 How's everyone doing? We're going to get before midnight. This is upon the recommendation of Transportation Parking. This is the ordinance of the city of Northampton, providing the code of ordinances city of Northampton be amended by revising 312-36 of said code, providing the parking locations and regulations. Amend, notwithstanding subsection E of this section under special circumstances or in connection with a special event, the Transportation Parking Commission by majority vote may alter the fee structure for the EJ, E John, the third parking garage, for a period not to exceed five days. If collecting, and then with the new language, if collecting established fees is impractical due to repair or replacement of machine parts or infrastructure, the mayor may temporarily alter fees for any municipal lot or metered space for a period not extending beyond the next city council meeting, after which altered fees shall revert to original fees. The mayor shall immediately write a letter to the city council president explaining the reasons behind the alterations, and the city council may vote to extend, modify, or reverse the alteration of fees at any time. Is there a motion? Some moved to put this on for? Second? We're going to die here.
Shit!
Thank you. Counselor Adams.
I have a question. What's the difference between, I mean, I see one, I see one side, there's a difference in sponsors. Are there any other differences?
Counsel O'Donnell, you want to speak to this?
I can answer that. It was simply rewritten. That's the biggest difference for a decision.
Yeah.
Trying to see if there are any other differences to highlight.
How is the original sponsor, the former counselor who drafted it, got dumped as a sponsor?
It was suggested he be kindly and gently dumped by, it might have been our able council clerk, just because he no longer exists as a counselor. So he was remained, I mean, we could add him back if you want to add, you know, amend.
Not about him.
What's his name? So...
He's there in spirit, I assure you.
And we should send him a postcard, should this pass.
Yeah, he's not worried if...
Move the question? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That's first reading. You'll have an opportunity to revisit that. This is, this is first reading also, this is with a positive recommendation from ordinance. This is fee structure for certain permits to be simplified.